Order the town council work session for Tuesday, the 23rd of November 2021. It is 3:00 PM. We begin with planning commission decision. Anybody have anything they want to call up and have a long meeting about?
I think Eric's getting a little sensitive about the call. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I'm ready for another one.
I know Kirsten, awesome.
Right. Legislative review, we got the 2022 mill levy ordinance for second reading. Hello, Brian.
So as the council will recall, last meeting, we discussed at first reading, how we set the property tax mill levy by ordinance each year. It is set at 5.07 mills. You cannot raise it without an election. You could lower it, but we've set it at 5.7, 5.07 mills each year. And that in 2022 was budgeted to bring in just over 4.2 million in property tax revenue.
Thanks, Brian.
Questions?
How does mill levy compare to other communities?
It's low. For example, it's about 10% of your property tax bill here in Breckenridge. The county, the fire district, the school district, all levy higher mill rates than we do. So you pay about 55.
Like a Pitt County or Eagle County, they higher?
Counties, so they would probably be higher than our rate. As far as other municipalities off the top of my head, I don't know.
I think what Jeffrey's getting at is how does a, how do property taxes here compared to places like Austin, Texas?
Texas, here in Somme County, 55 mils, so.
Yeah, it's a bit of a rhetorical question. I knew that. That was a rhetorical question.
I know, you're just doing it to make a point, you know. But even at 55 mils, you're pretty low in Somme County. And again, we're only 10% of that 55. Some people say, oh, you know, I'm paying my property taxes to the town. It's really mostly to the county and the school district. And I think red, white, and blue is third on that list.
Cool. Anything else for Ryan on mill levy? All right, Brian, thank you. ADO code updates. Julia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So today we take forward the second reading of the accessory dwelling unit update. And we are really clarifying the definitions related to ADUs and also providing some incentives like increased positive points from one to three. And then we have some administrative incentives that we do currently, which we've implemented, including fee waivers for water service, development review and building fees, which you don't see in this proposed ordinance. At the work session on the 26th, the council had a few corrections with grammatical errors and also regarding the wet bar definition. So we've tried to clarify that. And in reviewing it, we worked with Kirsten and it was decided that we should be maybe reformatting this. And so we created actually a new policy, 51 absolute. So what we had previously, none of the content has changed, but we had everything listed in the ADU definition, including the requirements. If you have an ADU, which is a little confusing, so we put it into a new policy, policy 51. So that is kind of how we reformatted that, tried to make some clarifications to the wet bar. Do want to point out that, you know, we do have a definition of kitchen already in the code. And that is really limits a residence to one kitchen. So then you're allowed a wet bar. Now, if you have an ADU or second kitchen, you've got an ADU essentially, so.
Thank you. Questions? Everybody good with where we've gone on this?
To solve everything?
No.
Solves everything.
I brought this up last time and maybe I'm forgetting the answer or we are going to look into the answer. But you know, if someone, I guess if they did restrict it, you can't take that back. I mean, if they took the ADU out, that doesn't change anything because the property's already been restricted correctly, correct?
Right. The covenants that we put in place now currently run with the property in perpetuity. So it would show that there is a feed restricted ADU there.
Sorry if that's a repeat, but that's important to me. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. We have loudspeakers for second reading. Going to make Truckee do this? Afternoon, Mayor and Council. So what you have in front of you is similar to what you saw a couple of weeks ago with a couple of exceptions. We added in a clarification regarding live music events that they're not subject to the same requirements. We also based on a planning commission recommendation, so we did get to take this to planning commission last week between first and second readings. And so we added provision in there that allows us to limit the amplifier wattage in terms of the noise volume that comes out of that. The other thing that didn't mention in the memo is Kirsten did add in a grandfathering clause into here too, which makes it clear that any existing speakers are grandfathered not subject to the permit. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. Mark, questions?
How do you test wattage?
What should be on the amp that you buy?
Yeah. How will staff verify the wattage?
There's, I think there's specifications with the speakers for the wattage that's provided on that.
Sticker on them that dogs.
All right, cool.
It's on the amp too. Max wattage.
Really?
Who?
Be a good name, Max Wattage.
Are you a rock man?
Who provides the engineer?
The applicant would have to.
Okay.
Anything else?
Question. So live music, we're still letting that just go with the, with the ordinance for?
Noise.
Right, that's.
Right.
Got it.
Normally these fees would be set as part of the budget, but because the budget's already been established, Mark has the authority in the code to set a fee for particular permits that come in. And so we're going to set this one for the first year at $200. I think that'll cover the cost of staff time involved with it. And then it'll be part of the annual fee process that you adopt each year as part of the budget.
No, I think this is important because it kind of gets to the intent of the space. You know, the, is it dining the way the ordinance says? Is it just, you know, restaurant space or are we trying to create a bar outside? And we've seen impacts with bars outside in the past. So I think it's, I like it.
All right. Other questions?
No.
Thanks.
Thank you. Combination unit license, housing administrative fee, second reading.
Hit it. Have it right?
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, this is on second reading there. As you will recall, you requested that your tourism overlay district task force be asked for some feedback on the amount of the fee and a proposed exception to the, to the fee that would be for anyone that rented their primary residence for 21 days or less per year. In the memo, you will see that the task force was generally supportive of the amount though, I mean, of a fee, but maybe no consensus around the amount of the fee. And the task force was not supportive of creating an exception to the ordinance. So tonight you will, in the regular meeting, we have to make a decision about whether we're going to cover up the exception to the bill on second reading.
Well, the exception that they were not in favor of was the 21 day.
That's right.
What do they want?
Pardon me, they wanted nothing. They, they just felt like that it would be too hard to enforce. It's, it's cumbersome. It's, you know, they, they really felt that if we're going to do this, it should be, you know, the same for everyone. And, and it seemed like there was consent. Kelly disagree. I mean, it seemed like there was consensus on that one. On the exceptions for people who have invested in workforce housing and that kind of thing, they were kind of all over the place. I didn't hear a consensus at all. Did you, Kelly?
Uh, no. I mean, I think their point is if we're going to be charging a fee, everybody should, as many people as possible should be paying that fee. And that's kind of why they didn't agree with the exemption. And that's why they were interested in, you know, why aren't hotel rooms also subject to this fee? So it was, you know, there's just a lot of different points being made. There, I don't think there was any kind of really agreement.
On the primary residence exception under certain days, was that largely consensus that there should be no exception there?
I think it was entirely.
That one, I think there was consensus, yeah.
What, what is there, what was the rationale for that?
I, you know, well, they recognized that enforcement, that.
Yeah, enforcement, I can see.
Trying, trying to administer it would be challenging. But they also, I think fundamentally felt, or at least some of the more vocal ones, that, you know, that it should be equal across boards. You know, what's good for one's good for all.
Yeah. I think there was a lot, yeah, a significant feeling of if you're going to be charging a fee, then the, you know, we're trying to raise money for these different housing programs, then don't create a. then don't create a bunch of different exemptions. Just move forward with, move forward with the fee.
How would it work if someone, you know, has, you know, has a two-bedroom house in for twenty days, they rent out one bedroom? Would they be hit for a two-bedroom license?
Yes.
It would be.
Okay.
Well, if you, if you rent out one bedroom and you, I mean, it doesn't matter what part of your house you rent.
Yeah.
Then you have to get licensed for the whole house.
Whole house, because there's just no way to verify.
Right.
But fee per, per bedroom.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, as far as the compliance goes, my, my feeling on this is like a lot of the things that we do, our compliance is, our, our enforcement is not great. I mean, it's just not. You can, you can go through the planning process. You can put in landscaping, get positive four points. And in a couple of years, you can tear trees down and we just don't have, I mean, a small town like this does not have the manpower to enforce a lot of the things we do. It's just by nature, we rely on the, on the goodwill of the community that want to be part of Breckenridge and make Breckenridge what it is. Right? So, you know, and then on the other hand of that, we, we do rely to a certain extent on neighbors saying something when, you know, their neighbor's, their neighbor's doing something out of, out of the box. So I don't have a, I don't have a problem with this part of it. I don't have a compartment. I don't have a problem with the compliance piece. The only thing I would ask if we would do this is if you get caught, you lose your license. You know, I know you have to go through some, we have to go through some kind of, um, hearing thing, but I talked to Rick about, you know, if we went down this road, that when they came in, they would have to sign an affidavit that I understand that I can only rent this for one twenty-one days out of the year. And if I rent it for more than that, I am subject to the loss of my license.
Yeah, or ability to obtain a license going forward.
Whatever, whatever that is. That license then goes back into the pool. So.
Is there any way on, on this, we could say, say, say it's twenty-one days, that they just have to submit an email saying, these are the days that I'm renting. And it, it could be real time. You know, they get people coming in two days and they send a, they send an email to housing and saying, I'm renting someone from the, from the tenth to the seventeenth. And in that way, we could.
Well, we should, we should know anyway after the fact because they're supposed to call, um, collect the tax and, and remit it.
Okay, so there is a way to, there is a way that we can, that, that if, if a neighbor does rat them out, we can verify that they had no.
As they're reporting.
But they probably wouldn't report the taxes because that, that would be, actually, that's a pretty easy way, right? Like if they're reporting more, more days than what they have, like they'd be pretty much admitting to fraud, so.
The problem, the problem with the tax is, is you don't know how much they charged for their rental. The tax is a percentage of the dollar.
Of the whole, but it would be easy, that would be fairly easy though.
First of all, they, the first hurdle is they have to prove that it's their primary residence. Yep. Which is probably less than, um, I don't know, what, what do you think we'd have? One percent, maybe?
Right.
And so once then they prove it's their primary, then you have to, if you think it, we could, I mean, you're, we're adding a position to help with enforcement. We'll have different things. It, could it be a challenge? Yes, but it's doable. And like Eric said, I think, I wouldn't do it because you don't think we can enforce it. If you think it's the right thing to do to have that exemption in there, then, uh, do it. You, um, how we go about having some rules associated with that, I think would be part of the administrative rules that we established down the road, but we just need to know what version to bring in front of you tonight. With it in or with it out? So.
I know Kelly wants it out.
I mean, I'm, I have to say I'm a bit on the fence. I was surprised that the, there was such support to not have it in, um, by the committee. And I do, I understand what you're saying, Eric, about the enforcement. I want to stop sending that message to our town. So I think we should maybe not keep saying that at council meetings that we don't enforce things because I'd like to start enforcing things better, at least. But I did think, you know, I'm not sure which member said it, but if the point is to raise money, to get people into housing, locals into housing, then, you know, why are we creating these, these exemptions? That just really rang true to me. So, um, yeah, I guess I would, I would be on not creating this exemption for twenty-one day.
True.
I guess in general, I'm supportive of this direction and I think, um, this fund that we'll establish will really support town programs, buy downs, housing helps, buildings. Um, I'm supportive of the general direction. I'm still having some heartburn over the timing, not giving people enough of a heads up. I think scaling up makes it more agreeable that we're not going to the full amount, but still even as it stands, a January one fee of four hundred per bedroom, I'm, um, not fully supportive. As is, again, talking through the primary residency exception, I mean, that I think is an opportunity for full-time residents to make a little extra when they're out of town. So that specifically I lean towards being more lenient with, um, and otherwise the other big exception that, um, in Beaver Run and the cases of properties that have contributed. So I still am having, um, a hard time with that. So as is, I'm not supportive of this ordinance.
Okay, Jeffrey?
I'm supportive of the, and the, of the ordinance in general. I still think we should, we should stick with the, uh, primary resident can rent their place for twenty-one days.
And the fee.
Pardon me?
And the fee.
And the fee, yeah, yeah.
It was a four hundred. Um, I'm supportive of the, starting with a four hundred and ramping up. Phew, with the twenty-one day, um, I'm on the fence too. I, Kelly, you said a lot of what I'm thinking. I think I might be, I'm leaning more toward allowing the twenty-one days for the primary residents. I might be an idealist, but I would like to get to a place where we can enforce it. That's like that goal a lot, to be able to enforce everything.
Um, for the four hundred dollar fee, um, I'm supportive of that. And I, I like starting at four hundred, passing the ordinance to go up to the seven fifty-six, whatever it is. However, I, I, we've heard a lot of good ideas around, um, criteria for incentives. However, there, there's just so many things out there. We, many of us have bought workforce housing over the years. Many of us are master leasing workforce housing. There's a bunch of condo associations that have a couple of units that they have employees in. There's a bunch of condo associations that have manager units. There's, um, how many workforce housing? Is it a form of a number of units times a number of years? It, it's too much. I, I think we do the four hundred for a year. And next year, when we, I think the ordinance requires that we do an analysis. I think part of that analysis is looking at some of these incentives and seeing how they would affect the number and would that change the analysis to make us have charge more because it would be times less units. So long-winded answer is I'm supportive of the four hundred. I look forward to continuing to hear, uh, about, um, incentive ideas, but I, I want to wait, I want to go a year at the four hundred. And I want to see, um, what the effects of it are, positive, negative. And I want to continue to hear, um, incentive ideas. And I think we need to leave ourselves plenty of time in a year to, to satisfy the ordinance when we do our analysis to include incentives. For the twenty-one days, personally, I, I love the idea because it helps locals. And that's what we're trying to do is help locals and it helps local, locals own their own primary residents in town, living here. And yes, it, it helps them pay for a vacation, which they desperately need. So, but when we took it to the committee, I, I was shocked to hear that the committee was not supportive of that. So now I'm conflicted because the committee, and, and really it was a couple loud voices on the committee. It was not, the whole committee didn't really weigh in on that piece. So I'm, I'm conflicted, but if I, you know, if I'm forced to vote, I think I'll support the twenty-one days just because fundamentally it's what we're trying to do here. And it helps homeownership and primary residents in the valley, in the, in town, which is exactly what we're trying to do.
And we're, just to be clear, we're saying primary resident.
Primary residents. And, you know, yeah.
I mean, this is really just to figure out whether to leave this in for tonight or not.
Sure.
All we're trying to figure out.
With a primary residence, I'm still in favor of the twenty-one day. I, I like that it helps residents. I think it makes sense. Um, so yes, I'm in favor of that. For the four hundred dollars, um, I still think we're, I still feel that we're trying to rush it. And I would really like to get through the overlay district first. Once we establish that, then let's start looking at this fee. But I just think we're pushing it too quickly and, um, that's my feeling on it.
But to be clear, just, I mean, I know you know, but just to be clear for anyone listening is that even the people in the overlay district will still have to pay this fee and buy a license. Right, so that won't change. Everyone who's short-term renting still has to buy a license.
They're separate issues. All right.
That just came up, so I just wanted to.
Agreed. Except they're separate issues.
Days and the rest of it we'll talk about this evening. And if we're going to have two no votes, we're going to have to really take that into account.
But you're not going to say whether you support the four hundred?
No, do that tonight.
Whoa, can we all do that?
Yeah, I would just, I ask you guys. Yeah. Ask you guys about the twenty-one days, not the four hundreds.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I asked, so she can either put it in or take.
Much information. Need to hand out, we'll still hand out a revised version that you'll vote on tonight because we want to reinsert the definition of primary residence back into the document.
And do you think that those two ways of verification is enough? Two forms of verification?
Is that what we said in the original definition? Or we talked about looking at.
Two of four, right?
Oh, it's three.
Oh.
Is it? So you might be right, Kelly.
Maybe I'm wrong.
I'm, I'm not recalling.
The definition of primary residence?
Yeah.
Means the, the definition we have right now is means the place in which a person's habitation is fixed for the term of the license and is the person's usual place of return. A person can have only one primary residence.
No, I meant, I'm sorry. I said yes, but I actually just meant that, um, how they would prove, how we would verify that they had a primary.
That'd be part of our rules. I mean, we could do it off voter registration. Typically, we'd look at voter registration. We'd look at driver's license. We look at mailing, you know, do they have something to show?
Yeah.
So, you know, we'll, we'll establish some guideline, administrative rules around what it takes to, it's not just as simple, this is where I live. They've got to have some to show us that. Yeah.
One thing I think we still need clarification on though is, um, right now it is written, it's just a non-renewal of the license if there's a violation or a non-payment, but it sounds like we want a different, um, penalty for the twenty-one days exception.
Yeah, does that need to be in the ordinance?
Yeah, I think so.
Agree.
I don't know that we want to put that in rules. We typically. I don't, it'll take long. We just need direction.
Or the administrative rules.
Penalty phase.
Well, isn't that in the administrative rules or does it have to go into the legislation?
It would be better to go into legislation. I don't think that's hard to do if you can come to a consensus as to what you want to see.
If you violate the twenty-one days, you lose your license.
If you violate that exemption by
Right.
exceeding the twenty-one days or
Or lying about.
Or lying, or you're misleading about being your primary resident.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
If you violate it, you lose your permanent, you, you lose your primary residence.
You lose your.
Just take it away. Just kidding, kidding.
It goes into the housing pool.
The penalty for that upon, I mean, the penalty for, the initial penalty would be a, you know, a loss of their license. So where we have a penalty phase for other violations relative to short-term rentals that require certain steps that we go through before you get to, and typically it's on a, on a first offense, just not a loss of license, so.
This one should be.
Yeah. I don't disagree.
You know, just a lot, just they'd have to get back in the queue.
Okay. All right.
For a while will be enough, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Well, wait a second, wait a second.
Yeah.
But they weren't. Okay, nevermind.
They'll have to get in the queue to get a license.
Yeah.
Get a license at that point.
You can have that for tonight, add it to that one.
I agree. No longer rent it for the twenty-one days, right? Yeah.
Once you lose your license, you can't rent it, so you get a new one.
Okay, we've had, I know Bob and Todd have both sent letters. We'll have public hearing tonight and go with that? Good? All right, Treetop Advocacy Center lease renewal ordinance for first reading.
Uh, Mayor and Council, this, uh, is a continuation or allow it to be continuation of a current lease that we have with the Treetop Advocacy Center, which is at the Breckenridge Grand Vacations Community Center. This would be, we did the initial two-year lease with them and we did one renewal for an additional two years and they're asking for another two-year, um, renewal. And it's just, it's a three percent increase, which is consistent with what we've been doing, so.
Is there a reason they're only doing two years at a time?
It's just what their preference is.
That's fine.
They have no intentions to move them. We asked them, we said we do more, but that's what they asked for, so.
Hey, Rick, is, is there any burning, um, desire for a group that, that wants to use that space? I mean, is there any need that is greater for a better use of that space out there that you're aware of?
No, I couldn't say there's a, for a better use. I think it's a critical use.
Yeah. I can't really imagine.
Wasn't going to throw them out without helping them have something else. I was just thinking specifically in that building.
No, yeah, I'm not, uh, certainly not aware of anything.
In the building.
Used to be a restaurant, a library.
And so, and what's really important about that space is that for children, um, it's a safe space. People, kids are used to going to the library and associate positivity to it. And it feels like a safe space typically for kids. And so in a lot of areas, it's like a police department or, you know, more intimidating area or a hospital, like more intimidating areas, um, or space. So that's why I, I personally think it's really important that it's in that area is because it is a, a safe space for kids. It's not as scary and intimidating.
It's a great point. Really good with this.
Those are not my thoughts. Those were the thoughts of the smarter people.
I think it's true.
It's a great point.
About the kids.
Good, about the kids, you good with kids?
I'm good with kids.
Dick wanted to move hockey in there.
Hey, Dick wants.
No, I've always wanted a maker's space there personally, but, but I think the kids in the, the, the context, Aaron, just put it in, I'm all for it.
Okay.
I'd love to find a space for a maker's space.
I know.
These are kids that are in serious, serious emotional.
Oh, absolutely.
Crisis.
Crisis, so.
All right, the twenty-twenty-two budget adoption by resolution. Brian, again.
Okay.
Hi.
What's up? C I P?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, C I P.
Remember I had to tell them the money I snuck in?
Oh, that's right, yeah. Shannon's got some stuff she's gonna tell you about. As far as the budget in general, as the memo in the packet explains, we had ten changes to the budget that were discussed at the retreat. And then there's kind of one more there that we was discussed with council subsequent to the retreat and is included in the budget document for approval tonight, which is the addition of, uh, one S T R admin staff to the finance department. As far as the budget in general, as council is aware, this budget restores a lot of the program expenses and a lot of capital expenses, right? Talk about, but we'll talk about that in a minute, uh, to the budget and is really our first normal budget in terms of not anticipating any kind of revenue reductions or program reductions, uh, due to COVID nineteen. So that is what you'll see in the document in terms of the changes. And Shannon will talk a little bit about the C I P.
The one item I wanted to bring to your attention was the tennis facility rooftop solar at the budget retreat.
At the budget retreat, a budget of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was requested. I met with Jesse Burley after that and she said five hundred thousand dollars is more in line with getting a total system as the tennis center. So I increased that to five hundred thousand dollars for your approval. We'll still work to get grants and subsidies to lower that down, and then we could just roll it over any extra to the next project. So reflected in the budget that is in the packet is a five hundred thousand dollars for the rooftop solar at the tennis facility.
That's a big roof.
Why it costs that much?
How big is the system gonna be?
I don't know off the top of my hand, but that would be, I think, a total replacement for the use.
Okay.
Replacement? For town use, then? Do we, will we use all that?
I think we would use it at the tennis center is the concept.
There's some.
But I could be wrong. If Jesse's listening, I'm sorry.
Wow.
So we think we can offset it with um some grants.
Any extra we could throw at the parking garage?
But we want to go for the total system.
Where the water?
Yeah, and feel confident that we have enough budget backing to go for a full build on that.
They really like hot showers over there.
Did you say it was a replacement?
To replace the use of the energy.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought.
And yeah, and then if we produce more than we use, that just goes back to the grid to be used elsewhere.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was a roof replacement and I remember that we, I think we talked about this when we created the the tennis, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's good to see. I'm glad this.
But that was a change above what was requested at the budget retreat.
Anything else?
Nope.
No other change.
Questions? Everybody good with the budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a Bureau of Reclamation grant application. Hello.
Hi, Mayor and Council, how are you?
Good, how are you?
So tonight we have a resolution before you to allow the town manager to enter into a grant agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation. So this grant is for a water meter upgrade in the amount of one point four million dollars. It's part of our water efficiency plan and it's a matching grant at fifty percent. And so we've budgeted in our twenty twenty and twenty twenty one budgets to match this project. Do you have any other questions about this?
No.
Short and sweet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, manager's report. Public projects update.
Okay, um, everything has been repaired and back to status quo at the dam.
So the dam's not leaking anymore, thank you.
No.
So that was great. We had a meeting with the state engineer's office on Friday, got sign off to go on our winter shutdown. So now I'm also demobilizing again.
Did that happen yesterday?
The meeting?
But, well, so I noticed that the river, there was nothing.
Snow making.
And then at three o'clock, there was a river again. So I wasn't sure if that had to do with the dam.
I don't think so.
Okay. It was, no, it was dry as, I have other witnesses. It was dry as a bone and it smelled like fish. And then on the riverwalk. And then there was a river. Yeah, again.
Would that coincide? Yeah, coincided with the getting too warm to make snow in the afternoon?
Maybe. Yeah, it was really interesting down there. Yeah.
I'm sure it wasn't indicative of the release that we had to do when we dropped it three feet when the copper dam had the problem, because that was a lot of water. And I'm hoping yesterday's wasn't similar, but I can I can ask water department and see if there's anything.
It was just really interesting to see the difference over a couple hours.
So that's good news on the dam. And then I don't have anything else to add on the other projects, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions.
Carter Park looks good.
Good, thank you.
Need to figure out the parking, but the drainage project looks good.
I have a question. Are they installing the last big sign right next to the structure right now?
Yes, today the sign folks came back to install the one by the ski back tunnel. And then one by the pedestrian bridge over to Sunmill.
Putting up a big one. Looks like it's kind of right next to the main entrance into the garage.
Really?
A giant.
Probably the ski back one.
Yeah.
It was right next to the ski back. I saw him too, Rick.
Okay.
Our way one that says.
Opening again, similar to what's open, what's not, or?
No, it's just a regular hard metal sign.
Oh, okay.
We're waiting for some replacement panels on the electronic sign showing availability.
For the sign leading, like, going south into town?
You know, the one that's in the strip, next to the.
Oh, okay.
One to the structure, we have one that says level one, two, three, four, and it's supposed to show how many spaces are available.
Okay, okay.
But a couple of the panels burned out when they fired it up, so we're having to order new ones. And last I heard was not good on the delivery day, so we're trying to find some replacements quicker than eight months.
How do we know how many spaces?
There's cameras that count. They count you up and down and exiting.
Should we add, well, and actually, I don't know, is, has the parking garage been added to the electronic sign going into town?
It cannot be automated. Unfortunately, the software company that is running our signs currently, our platform is closing shop.
Oh.
If they'll support us through the end of the ski season, but then we have to procure another software system. So right now it still works the same where the parking attendance market open, closed.
Uh huh.
But the intent was to have it automatically update, but the software company has declined to.
They do it almost instantaneously. Once it's
Okay.
Once it's filling, they'll show it as, show it as full.
Uh huh.
So that it flows out at the end.
Has the parking garage been added as an additional lot, though?
Well, it's part of the.
The gondola lots currently.
Well, it just might be, it might be nice to know that there is like a covered parking option. It's
Yeah.
Into people.
Reward, that's just a matter of rewarding that, right?
Okay, yeah.
Once North Gondola undergoes its change, it'll be really important to distinguish that.
For sure. Yeah. Yeah.
But yeah, we can't make too many edits to the
Okay.
Other digital signs based on Clover or software.
Okay, as long as it's on your radar. Yeah, I just think that would be. It could be attractive to people, shiny new garage. And right now I don't know that people would associate the garage as the gondola lot, because like, I don't, it's, because it's a garage.
They're filling North Gondola first.
Yeah.
Skiers.
But do people have a choice? Like, if they want to park in the garage, can they choose?
They just have to drive past the flagger.
Right. It's a shiny, very good looking garage.
Once it's busy enough.
Yeah.
But you're obvious, you're.
Is it, is it the owner, self pay, uh, or are they?
Yes, it's the.
Like, I can go in there and drive around and then leave and if I'm not parking, I can just do what I want, right?
So you want to just drive around and not park?
Yeah, totally. Oh, cool.
What a snowy day, I would think.
I took a tour the other day. I highly recommend.
In your car?
Yeah.
Cool. Oh, nice. Yeah, I'd like to ride my bicycle and, you know.
Yeah, just.
Projects update for Shannon.
Anything?
Going once, going twice, sold. Thank you. Mobility.
Liberty.
That's Mr. Mobility, yes. Um, just a quick one today regarding the free ride. So excited to be uh at thirty five drivers now, which is two above where we were last week. So that's great. We are comfortable now running our winter service starting next Friday, December third. Um, if we get three more drivers, we'll be comfortable running the trolley route uh all day, every day. So uh we will be able to run with the thirty five current drivers, we'll be able to run uh the trolley on high volume days, weekends and holidays. So we're, we're pretty comfortable with that. So paying for three more drivers and then we'll uh move forward to full service on the trolley. The other thing you may see uh on Thursday, the ski resort is going to start running a station to uh Peak Nine bus, uh just in support of our Gray South route. We've been getting a little overwhelmed there. Uh, so they'll be just supporting us with the kind of skier traffic. So um other than that, that's all I've got.
Questions? Oh.
Great to see it up there.
Yeah. Just because I have you in front of me, I got a new hang up on the app. So first page, when you open it up, the page that's really the best page. Um, it's, it doesn't scroll all of a sudden, so. I'm sure you know that, just let you know. If you want that first plus, you're good, but if you want anything below it, you're.
I thought it was my flip phone.
But thanks for continuing to work on that.
We're working on it. More to come.
Alright, thank you, guys. Uh, housing and childcare update. Whole team's coming down.
Whoa. And didn't. No.
Cause she's good.
No, you know, she's really slipped a little bit in my life, in my eyes.
In my eyes as well.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm having Cory join me because um we are transitioning responsibility for a lot of these programs to Cory, um the lease to locals, the buy downs, housing help. So you'll see more and more of Cory maybe doing these um reports, but we um did have a committee meeting last Tuesday and um we talked about the Justice Center project, which you're going to see later today. We also talked about the Alta Verdi two project, where you're going to see that one later today, too. Um, we reviewed the GOCO um uh realignment of the rec path, which sort of goes around the housing project. So we viewed that and that's in your packet as well in the minutes. Um, we took a look at a couple of development agreements, um and then basically did lease to locals update, buy down update and housing helps update. Minutes are in your packet and we're here to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions?
We'll go in detail in the Justice Center and Alta Verdi two later, right?
Yes, yeah, we will. Yeah, because we have to pull the trigger on some stuff, so.
One of the things that I asked Lori to start working on was a I don't, I don't want to use the word simple, but uh a abbreviated one pager that really talks about dollar, the dollars that come into housing and the dollars that are going out to housing. For twenty twenty one and what's proposed for twenty twenty two. Um, you know, many people aren't aware of what we do every day and you can tell by their emails that uh wondering, you know, what do we spend the money on? What's this money doing here and that? And and there's a lot of things that we're doing and I want to be able to arm you with with those quick talking points when somebody says something to you and you know that that if we did, uh, you know, if we, if we, if we did twenty buy down units and we've resold X number of them at a cost of a hundred thousand dollars per unit, you know, that, that, there's a sum total there that had just cost us a million dollars. But we created, you know, twenty additional deed restricted units as a result of that. And whether that, or housing helps, and how many of those did we did? And when we propose a rental project, there's some money that we do as a subsidy, there's money we do as loans. There's money we put in upfront for infrastructure that's part of of those programs in order to keep those things at an affordable rental in perpetuity. And even if it's a for sale project, sometimes we'll put money in those things to have those resold at lower AMIs more of those. Somebody's got to cover that gap, you know, in there, and that's what we try to do. Plus, generally, infrastructure is a big cost to us. So each project is unique, each project is different. But we also know that generally if we produce a rental unit, although these numbers are changing like crazy, you know, it's three hundred, four hundred dollars a square foot to produce a rental unit out there. And uh, you know, and then there's also a a cost for a for sale unit, so, yep.
Yep.
She's gonna work on trying to get something together for you guys that you can have that in your pack, in your pocket. And it's a good exercise because this is what we'll be doing every year as we come in to propose fees for the next year.
And it's important, too, because when somebody says to you, I don't understand the buy down program, you can say, look, a buy down program costs a hundred bucks a square foot. We're building costs four hundred dollars a square foot, or whatever that comes out to, whatever that metric is, is important that we know what that number is, so we can sort of explain to people why leasing locals and the buy down program and everything else that we're doing that is not actual building is financially makes more sense than just building, so.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. One other thing, and I know we've talked about it before, if we're getting that information out in the community, really put a push to educate the community about housing, housing helps, buy downs. I still have friends that have no idea about the program. They hear about it and think it's incredible. So making sure we're getting that information out, too.
Teach more communication now that we're getting a little bit better with our staff.
We could ever find a communication person.
Hey, Lori, I did, I did see the numbers, but on the lease to locals program.
Yeah.
Four thousand dollars for a five month lease? Or is that?
It's a twelve month lease.
Twelve month lease.
Twelve month lease. Is that high rate, that twenty four thousand?
Probably about two thousand a month. Okay.
And that was only the original um sort of, I think that expires after like thirty days, then everything drops a little. It was just trying to get our November, December leases, yep.
By twenty percent.
How much?
Twenty?
Percent. Yep.
What, twenty percent? I missed that.
The incentive program, the grants drop by twenty percent as of December first.
So that went through the end of the year? When does that end?
Um, it ends, I believe, December first-ish, and and the goal was really the November one, December one leases.
Got it.
Well, after that, it drops by twenty percent. I don't remember the exact date. It was a certain number of days.
For a year's lease.
Uh huh.
Okay. Yeah, that would have, that would really help to have a talking, a few points on that, too, to explain it. I mean, I've only gotten a couple of questions, but I really wasn't very articulate answering it.
Yeah, no worries. We can get you a good cheat sheet on what we're spending, what our revenue is, what our cost per unit is with the different programs.
Thank you. Anything else for Lori? Alright.
Also had a childcare meeting on uh November third, just our normal childcare uh committee meeting. Uh, minutes are in the packet, but if there's any questions, there wasn't anything that needed to be addressed from the meeting.
How are the centers doing right now, just in general?
Um, they're doing well. They have had a couple of closures, COVID closures, just of rooms, not of a whole center. Um, and they have been manageable. We've still been using some of our emergency funds for those when people have had a reduction in income due to a quarantine or a closure of a room. So those have come back a little bit.
I have a question regarding that. So um, I've heard about some of the closures and I've also heard that some of the centers or in some places, the mask mandate isn't being as followed as tightly. Is there anything that we can do as a town entity to communicate or to remind centers that this is really important since this is a demographic that can't get vaccinated?
I hadn't heard that. Did that come to you, Kelly, yet?
I've heard that. Um, I just think, well, I have done a little bit of research on it and the World Health Organization doesn't even suggest masks for under six years. So, and I think you know, I don't know all the background story on why the CDC says two and the World Health says six, but I know that the centers, you know, do the best they can, but what happens a lot is that kids have on a mask and they're playing, you know, in one of the areas in the class and they either pull it down or it works its way down. And so the teachers have for a year and a half been trying to get them to put it back on, but we're talking about kids who you know, are still being potty trained and like, we can't even get
We can't get adults.
Forty year old people to do it. So I think it's just, and I I knew, I know I've talked to a couple of teachers who say like, my priority is, you know, building a relationship with these kids. And if they see me every time I come and all I'm doing is nagging, 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 it's difficult. Like, my priority is getting these kids in the classroom to, you know, be a part of the school and frankly, the transmission, kid to kid transmission has been super low. And I, I think, I'm not even sure if we've seen any cases of trans, of kid to kid transmission in our childcare facilities. What about adult to kid in some of the closures? Has that been a case at all? Well, I mean, regardless of your vaccination status, the adult has to wear a mask in the classroom all day, every day. So um, I'm not sure if we've had any, if we've had any cases, it's been low. Um, and all of the teachers have to wear a mask inside all the time, whether they're bad or not. Okay. I think like the things that you can control, they're doing their absolute best at controlling. And we certainly get, I mean, I'll show you my email every single week, an email that says your kid needs to come with a necklace and two masks, you know, so that we can switch them out at lunchtime or when they get wet or I mean, the kids like two on them and they get holes in them, I mean, everything. And are all the centers sending out, do you know if all the centers are sending out that communication? Okay. They are.
There's no mask mandate for uh for teachers?
No, there is.
Oh, there is, okay. And I mean, I'm sorry, vaccine mandate.
Oh, and there's not a vaccine mandate for teachers, but there is, but we have a very high take rate generally. And then, um, you know, the childcare facilities have done different things um as far as. As far as some of them have routine testing that you do if you're not vaccinated. Everybody wears a mask. I don't know. I mean, it's, it's the same with every other population out there.
Well, right. I, it's just that every other population has a choice to get vaccinated. I think that's
You mean the little kids?
And the little kids don't. Yeah.
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 The rates of infection have still been very low compared to like the school district and things like that. So as much as it sounds terrible to have a classroom closed, those closures have been really few and far between and it's been usually
Well, the last two closures have been breakthrough cases. Both, both teachers were vaccinated, fully vaccinated.
And there, it was just that the teachers that have COVID, it's not the kids.
Right.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, if there's anything.
All right. Anything else on childcare?
Years?
Okay.
Intriguing idea of designing one of our workforce housing units for in-home daycare. Is that something you're supportive of? Does that make sense to you guys?
You know, I, I would like to explore it, especially if we move to a daycare, you know, more daycare facility options and they're building in Alta Verdi. They did it in San Miguel County and they were really, they did three out of 210, I think it was, that they designed specifically for childcare and they did a lottery for people to apply. They were very successful with two. The third one, they ended up having to convert back. So if we did go that route, I would want us to start small, you know, do one unit or even have people apply beforehand. If we could work that out with the building timing as well. But I think it's great because that is the big, one of the biggest barriers for people to start an in-home center is just the changes that they have to do to their property.
Second question, how's staffing? Are we, I guess I ask this in the context of, I'm wondering if the kids are back. I mean, are we, cause I know for a while, you know, we were short kids and, you know, is, I know we have a waiting list for the infants, but for the others, are the classrooms full and do we have enough staffing?
The classrooms are full. Staffing still waivers, just like every industry that we're seeing across the country, but definitely here in Summit County. So they go up and down, but they're holding strong. The rooms are all open to capacity. But yes, the, whenever I talk to the directors, they say that they're, the waitlist predominantly are probably about 80 to 90% infants and toddlers. So yes, that preschool age is covered very well with the county.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Where did Mountain Top end up?
They're in the Riverwalk Center, not in the Riverwalk Center, in the River, River, River Mountain Lodge.
Oh, okay. Cool.
Right next to Castaways, right?
Right next to Castaways.
That's great. Thanks.
I don't know. Are they open yet? I hadn't heard that.
I don't think so, but I guess they were, they did, yeah, they've been doing a lot of work, but I'm not sure. That's great that they found a space. Does it sound like it's only for three years or that's just how like?
I think that was just the starting point. It sounded like that was a probable good home for them for the future. Yeah. I don't think they had a, uh, there was no discussion of it ending after three years. So.
Nice.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, committee reports. Anybody questions on any?
I just love the outreach, outreach to the Hispanic community. I think that's great.
Yeah. Boy, that was successful, huh?
Nice work.
No kidding.
The rec center?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was very cool.
Awesome to hear that so many of them had never been in and you got them in. That's just a huge success.
I was doing like a kind of a curl demonstration and I think that
For the, for the five year olds?
Yeah.
I didn't realize there was a scary component to that.
Alrighty then. Anything else? Financials, Brian.
Brian's coming. He's going to work out today. Up and down, up and down.
Packet, you have a report showing taxable sales up through September. And showing that September from 2020 was, was fairly flat, but we do have some late filings, in particular in the grocery sector. So that'll catch back up. And then your next month report, you'll see that, that amount put back into September. So we'll have a better idea once, once that kind of clears, but it won't push it up too much relative to the total sales activity from September 2020. But as you can see, um, we've still got that steady revenue growth that we've seen return really over the summer. Comparing to 2019, there's, I should say, um, yeah, from 2019, you'll see there's a less of a gain there. 2019 being our last normal year. 2020 did have those three really bad months during those shutdown times that we had, starting March, April, May. But, um, you know, the revenue growth that we've seen return has continued through September, even though it's kind of one of the smaller growth months we've seen since the recovery restarted. But again, there's a, there's a late filing there and it's also a pretty small dollar month. So. Another news, uh, you know, real estate transfer tax is continuing. Uh, we have the number in there for your report here, but as of today, uh, my understanding is with the latest batch we've put in, we, we did pass the $10 million mark. So there's a lot of rent activity.
So real estate hasn't taken a hit at all in the last.
That would be tough to argue.
Yeah, okay.
That's very much an understatement. Kind of anecdotal, I, I can't, I'm scratching my head on, when I look at, I'm looking at net, net taxable sales year to date. You know, that first report and I look at the comparison of 19 to 21. And I see short-term lodging's up 50%. And I see groceries only up 1%, 1.53. And restaurants are up 1.02. Where are they eating?
Well, unless I'm thinking of it wrong, one thing that's going to show that grocery number being, that increase being a little low is we do have a missing month in there. So that'll go up. But anecdotally, I, I couldn't really tell you.
Plus you can't find anything at City Market since they moved everything around.
So is that, are you saying September is missing?
Correct. We have some late returns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that is ADR there. I mean, cause you could have relatively the same number of people, but much higher ADR.
And we know.
And so. That'd be a great question for Lucy, because is ADR up 50% in two years? That seems crazy. Is it Todd?
Wow.
Probably is, huh?
Yeah. Are they bringing their own food?
Oh, there could be too.
Yeah.
Or Frisco.
Any other questions on financials? You'll be here tonight for the resolution, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Great. Tourism overlay district task force update. Rick or Trucks?
Yeah. I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't want to botch up.
Well, myself, Dick and Kelly were, so I'm sure they can chime in. So after we had our discussion about the fees, um, the main part of the meeting was about the mapping for identifying an overlay district area. And, uh, we staff provided a recommendation based on our first meeting and, um, generally the, generally the commission, um, the task force agreed with that. We had, um, essentially what it took in is the overlay area that is proposed is what you might expect. Those neighborhoods west of town, uh, going up to the ski area. We took in land use districts 20 through like 25, and I think there was land use district 39, which is the base of peak seven and eight. Land use district 10, which goes through a lot of that area as well. So anyway, we have that mapped out now with the, uh, for the committee. We did carve out a couple of areas that we pulled out of the overlay district. Those in particular being Gold Camp in Grandview. Areas still have a fair amount of locals living long-term in them, even though they do have some short-term rentals as well.
That's still District 10, right?
Correct.
That's the one that calls out permanent residents.
Yeah.
In land use language.
Yeah, exactly. And, um, we also pulled out Shock Hill subdivision, um, because it's really low utility in terms of short-term rentals. The area right by the gondola where the duplexes are, that, that's still in it. So those are some of the areas we took out. We did add a couple of areas to the overlay, uh, Main Street Station, which is at the very southern end of Land Use District 19. The rest of 19 basically goes up on Main Street. And, uh, so we didn't cover all the Main Street, but we did include Main Street Station. And then we also pulled in the Woods neighborhood and the South Gold Rush Lot where, you know, you just approved the development there. So those are in the proposed overlay district as we speak right now. Of course, we still have to decide what that means, make a recommendation on that, which will be the subject of the next meeting, uh, next Tuesday. We also, there, there was just, uh, a couple of other areas that were identified possibly as like a second tier overlay. Still needs a little more discussion, but Upper's Warriors Mark was one of them. And, um, in addition to that Highlands Green, um, was discussed as well. That one, I don't, I'm not sure there's as much consensus on the group with, but it has a relatively high rate of short-term rentals over 50%. There's a shuttle that goes, comes into town from there. So we'll have more discussion about that, but.
Or is it Tiger Road?
To go in or to be taken out?
To, to be in or maybe a second tier of an overlay if we decide to go there.
That shuttle was there to get points though. Just, I mean, that was, that shuttle was not to get guests into town. That, that was, you know, that's not to run people from Beaver Run into town. That shuttle was there to get points to pass that development. So I, I don't want that shuttle being part of the, I don't think the shuttle should be part of the discussion that this belongs in the overlay because they have a shuttle. They have a shuttle because they needed points. So.
Are you talking about Highlands Green?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a big argument at the time about that thing, too. So.
Certainly can't argue proximity on that.
No, you can't. And that's, I think that opens a can of worms personally.
I think Mark said it well. There was not consensus on that one.
So at the next meeting, um, we intend to start exploring some options of, okay, what does that, this mean now in terms of permitting within the overlay district versus outside of it? I mean, the simplification is it'll be little or no permitting outside the overlay district and there might be some within it. But, um, that's where we need to get to more details and staff's working actively on some options to bring to the meeting with some numbers that we can take a look at. So, yeah, we're coming in that.
Mark, the only other property that I remember we talked about, and I thought we decided to include it, was Main Street Junction, which is across Main Street on the east side, but it's connected with Main Street Station with HOA fees, amenities, et cetera, et cetera. Is that correct that Kelly and Mark? I think it was.
Right. Yep.
I think the next step, one of the things that staff's looking at now is like number of units, like what are we talking here, you know? So that's kind of the next step. I mean, I think we've done, there's really a ton of knowledge on the task force about where the units currently reside and that kind of information. But now I think we get down to the, um, much harder steps of, so how many units are we talking and what does that mean for management and outside the district and, you know, will we need to peel some of these off in order to make it more in alignment with the goals of harmony, you know, for visitors and sense of place? So the next steps will certainly be harder, but it's a great task force.
Good. One thing I wanted to bring up, we talked about a little bit of coffee talk, which Kelly blew us off. I don't know if you
I'd just like to say, when you guys don't show up to coffee talk, I text you and they're like, did you remember it's coffee talk? I didn't get a single text.
I think we should let the task force concentrate on the tasks that we have hired them for. And that's the overlay district and not throw anything else in their lap until this gets done. This is too important. And I think we, we derailed that last meeting with discussions on this other stuff. I would just suggest as a council, let's let them get through this. And then if we have other stuff later and they're, they want to stay together, then we can do that. But you know, it's limited time to get a lot of work done and I really would rather us not delay them. So if you're all okay with that. All right. Mark, thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah. And just kudos to Mark's team. I mean, we have really compiled a ton of information and they seem to have lots and lots of answers to questions. They're really doing
This is super important.
Very willing to get more if questions come up. So I, I echo, echo that.
Awesome.
All right. Uh, exterior food and beverage areas.
This is where we talk about percentage.
This is the one I was talking about.
Thanks, Todd.
All right. You can see Aaron's excited about it.
I'm so excited. Jump in.
Um, all right. So this is your first exposure to what we've drafted for the exterior food and beverage policy modifications. And, you know, we were, council directed us, um, after the RMU project had gone through to take a look at this and look at the impacts that we don't account for in our code from exterior dining areas. And so a lot of those are related to is what they, those generate such as employee generation, lighting, increased water use and parking needs. So we took a look at the code, um, took this to planning commission and, and it's essentially what, what they suggested in here. So we've, this is all new. Um, so we have a new definition of exterior food and beverage areas. Is and locations are associated with that. We split that into within the conservation district and outside, and that has a lot to do with design. Um, and the variations of sizes of lots and so on. So we have that distinction. We also took, um, we heard from the planning commission, some concern about being maybe a little too strict on businesses, maybe the small guys, things like that. And Rick actually had a great suggestion of throwing in a 200 square foot allowance exemption. So kudos to Rick. Thank you. Um, so yeah, you, you'll see here that we deducted 200 square feet from all these calculations to kind of give that, that those really small businesses, the ability to have outdoor, um, food and beverage areas. So everything that we've calculated from there, it's minus the 200. So we've got a, we kind of looked at this as exterior dining areas are really probably utilized primarily during the winter seasons. There's some exceptions, but or sorry, summer and not in the winter. Um, so we took the interior requirements for restaurants and essentially it's just slashed those in half. And so we have density at 50% of the requirement. Um, we've got the employee generation at 50% of the requirement for indoor dining, uh, indoor restaurants. We also with parking 50% of a sit-down restaurant. And, um, for the plant investment fees, we went with the minor retail food establishments because it's similar to half. And then as far as the process, we were proposing this as a, as a class C application. So that is a staff level review or well, it's a consent calendar review, um, for the planning commission. So you would see it in your planning decisions and they can call it up or you can call it up if, if necessary. So I took the RMU, since that was our current, um, applicate, their most recent application. And, um, kind of calculated, I wanted to show you what that might look like with, under these proposed code modifications. And so again, we went with, you saw in the code that it was 30% of the lot area, um, that we were proposing. And so.
Real quick question on that. Sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Is that the footprint, 30% of the footprint or?
30% of the lot area. So you'd take your whole lot size and be 30%.
Okay. So if it's three stories, then. Okay, so if it's three stories, then it's all three stories count.
No, it's just a lot. It's just your lot line, your dirt. That's it.
So it doesn't count that.
Probably be thirty percent.
Of your total lot square footage.
It was confusing combination of indoor and outdoor. So I get it now. Thanks.
We went with lot size and just design wise, that seemed to make sense, but I know there's been some discussion about interior size.
Depending where you are, not necessarily, because if you're in the historic district, you don't have onsite parking for the most part.
Right.
If you're outside the historic district, then you might, but.
So like takes a, takes a canteen that does have park, like.
Right, so the canteen would have to take their entire lot, including the parking, the property that the building sits on. Thirty percent of that is the biggest that the debt could be, but you couldn't replace, you couldn't displace parking with it. You have to.
Right.
And you have to provide parking.
For that increase thirty percent.
I see you're pushing for thirty percent. Showing your hand early, Aaron.
Fifty percent. Well, I was still, I was looking at the rooftop portion anyway. Okay.
There's a few things, like if you took that example of the canteen, they'd have to also provide parking or buy into the parking district. If they're downtown in the service area, that downtown core.
Right.
They have the option of being able to buy into the parking district. Instead of providing it onsite, but they would also, for any parking that was onsite, need to make sure that they're meeting the snow stack requirements in our code and things like that. So there's, and landscaping and thing, and as well. So the historic district, there's more landscaping required.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yards, the canteen is elite, it's legal, non-conforming. So you couldn't build it like that today. There's no yard or anything.
Got it.
So let's see. So we took the lot, thirty percent of the lot size and came up with, so they had on the rooftop thirteen fifty ones proposed or approved, it would get down to one thousand sixty-eight square feet. And so then all these calculations are that one thousand sixty-eight square feet allowed for the thirty percent. Minus the two hundred square feet that's exempt. So all the calculations are based off of eight hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Because of that two hundred square foot exemption. So I won't go through all of these unless you have specific questions. But yeah, that's just essentially going through our code and with that eight hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Yeah, showing you what that might look like. Do you have any questions on this? I know it's a.
Can you explain finish grade again?
Finished grade would be what your grade ends up as, like your. Site. So that would be the finish of the, the grade. So they might have like a like a more, like a higher grade. So it might go up in elevation from the sidewalk, for example, and they might level it down towards sidewalk grade. And that would be the grade that we would, the grade they end up with is the one that we measure from. Say a rooftop, so the finished roof, which would then become a floor, like it would count from there. It would count from the ground, from the dirt.
Okay. Okay, got it.
So I think in the, with regard to that question, Carol, in the bistro lights, I think we put in a note. Yeah, that upper story decks not allowed on rooftop decks, so that there just would not be any question about that.
But they can have other lighting that's not bistro or.
Have other lighting that that would meet code.
Okay.
One clarification or point that maybe to get some council input on. Julie and I just talked about this this afternoon, is that the two hundred square feet was really intended for, you know, someone doesn't have anything, they go out and they put in two hundred square feet. It seemed like a reasonable, you know, freebie, so to speak, to do. The question comes up is whether we really want to allow that when someone's doing expansion. So for example, let's say the Kenosha. Still got room, they could potentially even add on to that pretty large deck already. Do we really want to give them another two hundred square feet, you know, without having to pay anything for it? Or if you already have at least two hundred square feet, should you just pay for any incremental change? And so I kind of wanted to get some council feedback on that. Because it also, you know, another issue related to that is we could see people come in and incrementally ask for two hundred square feet at a time to try to avoid this.
Yeah, that's a great point, Mark. Do you want us to talk about now?
Questions first.
Okay.
So could you say? Two hundred square feet if you, because it's for the little guys, right? So if you had a lot that's X size or smaller, like is that?
You, you could say anyone can get two hundred square feet without having to pay into this. Once they exceed that, they're going to have to.
That's not the intention. That's not.
The intention is not to allow you just to get an additional, but if you had zero deck. Yes, zero deck and you wanted to add six hundred, you would still get the first two hundred because you don't have an existing deck. And then the other four hundred would pay in. If you already have a deck and you want to expand it, you, in your deck, the current deck you have exceeds two hundred currently, then you don't get another two hundred free because you've already got two hundred existing. That would, that's, I think, how we intended it.
Yeah.
I have a suggestion, but I'll get to it after. I mean, if you think of like the little place, a north Main Street, right? They throw a couple of tables outside. They're really not impacting staffing or anything because they've got, you know, a hundred or two hundred square feet of use out there. It's not really what you're trying to target here.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Dick.
The question, and then I'll make my comment. With the decorative lighting, it, there was in here and I can't find the actual wording right in that real, right now. But it went, I think it referred to decorative lighting. It goes up the edge of a building. It goes up to a roof line.
Not to protrude from the upper wall plane or roof.
I didn't fully understand that.
So it's to really outline the structure, so of the building versus going beyond that roof plane, going up into the air.
I see. So you're saying it's okay to, to outline the, the lines of the building, but once you go above that, then not okay. Makes sense. That's good. Yeah, no, it's fine.
That sort of just clarifies what we have. But I think to Carol and Aaron's point, I think it would be helpful to, if I, on the upper story decks, under the lighting, it says not allowed on rooftop decks. But I think to reiterate that again, just repeat that under bistro lights. And I think that would clarify what you're both trying to get at. Do that.
So before we start, I think we're trying to solve two problems at once. And the first problem is, do we want to allow rooftop decks that have three hundred and sixty degree access? I think that's number one. Do you want to just prohibit those or not? And then number two, the other stuff we're talking about, which is making any new deck that was built in town sort of pay for its use, which is totally different. And I, I think, you know, Julia did sort of what we asked her to do and showed what would happen to RMU. But this, the intent of this is not to disallow any use because anybody with enough money could come in and do a, do a rooftop deck. So do you want a rooftop deck with a three hundred and sixty degree view or not? That's, I think, the first question we need to resolve. You could still do RMU. It might be smaller, but you can still do it. So this isn't going to stop that if that's the, that was the original intent of what we were talking about. And then we sort of morphed into some other stuff. So I, I think we need to, I think we need to separate that. What, what is the, the intent of that first piece?
A three hundred and sixty degree view?
Well, RMU has.
Meaning the top level.
Back wall, has no sidewall, has no, so they're open all around. And that seemed to be the issue with a lot of the people that were against the RMU rooftop.
I thought it was more noise.
Well, that noise emanates from everywhere. I mean,
They don't.
Is that, is that what you're trying to stop or not? What, what's the, because this isn't going to stop anything. This won't stop the noise.
Right.
This won't stop any of those. This will just, anybody that's got enough money can still put something on a roof.
So here's a question on, since we're using RMU as an example, what they did is they, they had an interior space. And I can't remember what it was, but it was very small. And they tripled or quadrupled the size of their space by going up on the roof. And that's what I thought we would, would like to do is to maybe reduce it to a percentage of interior space, not, you shouldn't get to triple your space with your deck. Your deck should be an add-on to what you already have, but not make it a separate, a separate restaurant up there. Does that make any sense that?
Well, if you're paying, why not? I, I guess, let me rephrase that. I, to me, it's two different questions. If it's on a roof, it's going to have one answer. If it's on grade, it's going to have another answer for me. You know, in terms of the ratios of space. My answer to, to your question, Eric, on roof is I'm okay with rooftop decks three sixty, but with some very strict restrictions that will mitigate the noise, the lights, et cetera. So I think the lighting with the bistro and all of that is appropriate. It's good. I think we've got some language in our loudspeaker ordinance about rooftop decks. We might want to do, to put a little more teeth in that to mitigate the, the noise issue of rooftop decks. I think this ordinance, the spirit of, the second piece of this ordinance, which is mitigating the impacts of outdoor dining, will also help frame the size of those rooftop decks to some extent, based on how much people want to invest. So that's, that's my personal feeling on those two. To the two hundred feet, I, I think the spirit of that is great. The small joint that just wants a little two hundred foot, you know, seating is great. And I think the easy way, as you say, restaurants that have two hundred feet or less of outdoor dining are exempt from this ordinance, period. And then we start over with the ordinance. There's no two hundred credit. All of this is from square one if you're over two hundred feet.
Unless you have existing.
Yeah, oh yeah, existing is grandfather. But then a couple more comments, but that would be, be my thought. But I'll throw that out and let others speak.
I'm largely supportive of the direction. I think it largely mitigates the issues that we saw where people weren't paying their fair share. Employee mitigation. I think that fifty percent makes sense for outdoor spaces. I guess I hadn't yet separated it as two issues between uppermost rooftop and outdoor space in general. I think there's a lot that overlaps. And I guess with rooftop, I think with the lighting or speaker ordinance or noise ordinance, I saw those as largely mitigating those in general. I think in rooftop space is an incredible experience. It's a good thing. I don't know that we want to necessarily discourage or not allow them, but just mitigate the impacts to the rest of the community. One just general question, how that's written for anyone to purchase from the TBR bank? Does that need planning commission or council approval? Or if they pay, they pay. And that's it.
Yeah, right now, something like that requires like a development agreement. So we have to take a look at that and we could make an exception.
It has to be density onsite.
Yeah, you don't, you can't buy any.
That's the other option. You have to own the density. You have to already have. Which would. Yeah, we don't let a lot of people buy T, we don't sell TDRs to many. Just randomly sell TDRs.
So right now.
Be receiving your hand. I don't think the historic district is.
Exactly. As I was going to say, is the entire historic district doesn't accept TDRs right now, unless you make an exception.
So in the proposed language is an exception. Under the definition, I mean, there's an asterisk in it after it talks about providing the density. It talks, says that transfers of density are allowed within the conservation district for food, exterior food and beverage areas only. So made an exception so that they could do that. I mean, thinking it doesn't impact the massing.
What did planning commission think about that?
They were okay with that.
They were okay with?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the reason why we don't allow it into the conservation district because we want to protect the massing of that district. But there's no massing associated with it.
And keep in mind, you're allowing these decks to already occur and be built and we're getting nothing for it.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
In a way, yeah.
Or just doing the accounting.
Now we're just making sure that they have, you know, parking's addressed and all the issues for the additional seating and everything else is going to.
I, I would even, I would even say I, I don't really even care about the density purchase, purchase. The building's built. I, I don't necessarily know that we need to have them buy TDR.
My only concern, Eric, is.
And let me explain.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Because we're charging for water and parking and those are the things that are really impactful. The density piece is not because it already exists. So you're, you're, you're going to end up charging for the things that are impactful to the community. The density piece is really, eh, you know, if you're charging for parking, you're charging for housing, you're charging for water. Those are the things that are impacting what the community has. I don't know that throwing density on top of it is.
So you're saying they don't have to have the density?
Well, I don't think so. I mean, I, I wouldn't, if they brought this to us without the density piece, I would have been fine with that. My, my thing has been water and parking and now housing.
This covers, this kind of addresses that.
Well, yeah, if we go with the other parts, there's, you know.
You know what, if you guys, anyone feel kind of hinky about, you know, I worry about these rooftop decks. One, when the real estate gets expensive, you have to build up. That's whatever, you know, that's what they do in cities. So I think we can see a lot of rooftop decks are coming down the pipe perhaps. But what I worry about in the summer, I'm, I'm not as worried about it in this regard, but sustainability. I mean, you know, if, if you, if you need that rooftop deck to, you know, to make you not, if you needed to get, you know, to get the covers in the doors as far as, as far as doing dinners, and then you have to heat it in the wintertime. And, and that's just, that's, I think, ecologically egregious.
I don't think we allow that, though. Well, I know that the.
That's why we're only doing fifty percent.
Well, we had.
They're only using it fifty percent of the year.
Okay, all right.
Restrict the usage, right?
Okay, there it is right there. All right, okay. I mean, I know that when.
Right now, so they.
When Bubba Gump was there, they put, they put walls around and they put heaters on. And I don't know how much, I mean, part of the winter, there's no way. I don't care what kind of heaters you got out there, you're not.
I mean, they, they've done it.
Yeah, Blue Stags done it too.
Doesn't Rich Street Kitchen have kind of a?
They don't use that thing in the winter time. Better summer only.
Right now, we don't regulate the outdoor, those temporary outdoor heating elements.
Was that temporary because of COVID or is that permanent? I lost track of that.
Well, like those roll-up propane kind of restroom heaters, we don't have anything in our code about that. It's hard to regulate because they're sort of temporary in nature. And they're not really development.
And you do need them in the summertime. I mean, they're, you know, when we had modus, even though three sides were closed in, there are plenty of days in the summer you can't sit on the deck because it's too cold. You need heaters or nights, I should say, not days.
Every's correct, though. I mean, they use a lot of, a lot of propane and I've heard in the wintertime, you go through a tank in the night in one of those.
Well, we talked about that for residential, I think. That's the talk about, I, I don't know that that's part of this conversation, but I think we should talk about it in the future.
Well, it is. This is just, I mean, this is a work session. We're not seeing this yet. So this is the time to talk about, I mean, you want to do an inclusive, you want to do an inclusive piece of planning code revision. This is it. Do it all now.
So what would that look like? Like what?
You just tell them that you want to see something like that and they'll come back with something.
What is a residential? I can't remember. What does a residential say?
Doesn't address that.
It's all, it's just code-based plus or minus.
Yeah.
This is outside, I mean, this is not going to be part of the positives and negatives of the code.
This, this one's challenging when we start talking about the heating because, I mean, I look at a few examples. You know, you, you think, you know, like the Maggie in those decks and, you know, on a beautiful sunny day, you know, or one Breckley's place, which, you know, you know, up there, the, what, what's that bar up there? Yeah. You know, I mean, that's, that's a huge deck and seating and, and I think they have heaters out there. They use it year-round. You know, so if we're going to limit time of use, how do we handle that? And then you look at something like Fatty's or the A R or Kenosha. On a beautiful sunny day, those decks are killer, even in March, you know? And without heaters, I mean, I don't think those guys have heaters going because it's just, you know, they jump out there when they get a day or two that's worthwhile. And, and I think that's kind of cool. So it's, it's hard when we start getting into the heating issue, but I, I hear what you're saying. If, like Jeffrey's saying, if, if they start, you know, heating year-round, then God, yeah, we're, we're throwing our energy efforts out.
I'd also be curious as to what Jesse would say and if there's any other towns that have some, have looked at this, you know? Because I, outdoor dining experiences are, are great, you know? I, I think, I think, we think that's positive. It's, but I also agree that heating the outdoors seems more and more like a, not so great idea.
Well, and honestly, if you get to a point where is it going to become a year-round thing? Then this changes and that becomes reasonable space. And you do have to buy density and it's a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And not fifty percent or thirty percent.
Can we retro, could we retroactive that? In other words, if, if we, if we, you know, kind of pass this down the road, you know, as is, and then it turns into these people, they're doing year-round with.
Grandfather, because they've already built.
That's my point. Yeah.
We need a commitment that it's not. I don't, I don't know what that looks like.
We might want to look at if we define some kind of structure, you know, like a canopy or a, you know, where they're putting so much plexiglass up or whatever, you know, you'll see some examples around town, I think, if you look around, where we try to tackle it with that, you know, to prevent it. Because certainly nobody's going to try to afford to heat it without some kind of, something around them to hold the heat. You know, we've allowed some of it during COVID, so it's kind of hard to think about it now because we've got them all over town. But without, you know, once that goes away, if we could try to tackle it by that, that might be an answer. I, I don't know how the wording would sound, but you, you guys know what I'm talking about? So that might be a solution.
It's got to be permeable fence type structure or something like that.
No, Eric's point on the density, actually taking it out would be, staff would be very comfortable with that because one of the issues is technically these outside areas do not meet our definition of density right now. We thought that was something that perhaps the council did want to explore. So we were trying to kind of carve out a provision to allow that, but it's technically not density that is being allowed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm okay taking it out. The more I think about, because we are asking to mitigate an awful lot of other things.
Everybody good with pulling out density?
I struggle a little. What's the right number? I, I, I really appreciate you guys going down this road, Mark and Julie. I, you know, and I think you framed it well, Eric, with, we have took kind of two questions, the rooftop and then the mitigating the, the impacts. I, I think outdoor dining is, you know, it brings a lot of energy to town. It's, it's, it's awesome, you know, and for the community, but fifty percent, you know, just because they're open doesn't mean that the inside's full and the outside's full. On a beautiful day, these places may have the outside full and the inside damn near empty. You know, because nobody wants to be in because it's so pretty out. So, you know, it's not necessarily adding that many impacts. So I, I guess I may lean more towards a number like thirty. You know, we can always come back and raise it.
Why? August, September, October?
Yeah. Exactly.
Way through June to midway through October.
Yeah, exactly. So I guess I lean a little more towards thirty percent. Kind of, I think the ordinance as a whole is good. We need to tweak it some as we've talked, but my, my, yeah, I, I'd be more comfortable with thirty instead of fifty.
So you're suggesting they provide, uh, the rate would only be provided at thirty percent of what is required as opposed to fifty?
Correct. And then, as I spoke earlier, let's just make that two hundred square feet, not a credit to everyone, but an exception for the small places.
But you're not going to limit that they're only open.
No.
They can be open as much as they want.
I think that's hard to do because I love seeing on a good spring day in March, when a couple of decks around town, there's folks out having beers on them. That's awesome. That's skeet down, you know?
That adds to the vibrancy.
Yeah.
The bistro lighting up to fifteen feet above finish grades is an issue for me though.
I'm with you.
And I know you don't want them on rooftops, but just think about modus for a sec. That's a fifteen, that's more than fifteen feet above finish grade. Those bistro lights really, you can't see from anywhere and they do add ambiance to that deck. It's a shame that they couldn't do that if they were to come in under, under this regulation. So I don't know what the magic, that's why this thing between, you know, what are, what are we really trying to get at here? What's the, what's the true intent of, of what we're doing? You know, do we just say, if we're, if we're not going to hit rooftops separately, a true rooftop, not a second leveled roof, do we just say bistro lighting on a rooftop that can be seen from, you know, all over has to be sort of like what we've done out, out here at the parking structure where it has to be, all lights have to be downcast because it is on a rooftop. That's a true rooftop deck, not necessarily a.
Perhaps you get at the true rooftop if you say it with a three sixty view, right?
It has three hundred and sixty degree.
Yeah.
View or something like that.
Perhaps we limit that, but then if you have walls.
More stuff for you to think about, Druckey.
A rooftop is on a roof, so.
What, but, but if it's right next to, like with modus, that's the roof, right? But then you have a building right here and a building right here. So you're not seeing it three sixty.
Understood, okay.
Yeah, it's all the way in the front. You didn't see it from the back either because that's pretty deep building. So, yeah, you really only saw it from one side.
Will that affect our dark sky compliance, our ability to?
Well, we, I mean, we, that's something that we added in with the bistro lighting. We did that as a separate change to allow bistro lighting for some excitement in the core.
And safety.
And we.
Of course, excited enough.
I'm with you. I think these things add real vibrancy to the community. So I don't want to, you know, the, I, my personal feeling is you have to pay for impact. But let's not hamstring it too much because they're, these are great things to have through the core of town. And, you know, the genesis of this was a noisy rooftop bar. Right. So.
Guys, your owners, do you think we should separate rooftop from grade?
I was not opposed to the R M U rooftop to begin with. So I'm okay with, I'm okay with the rooftop deck. I think it adds vibrancy. I like places like Lodo where every roof has a, something going on. I think that's, I think that adds something and, you know, as we go deeper into climate change, you're going to have longer summer. So I, I just, I like that. I like that piece of it. I like that vibrancy to the community. If you can mitigate some of the impacts, I think, I think we've, we've done what we should do.
I'm good with. Right now, I think Jeffrey brought up a great point with how this will impact our sustainability goal. So of course, would love Jesse to weigh in. And yeah, I agree, like outdoor spaces add vibrancy, rooftops, that, all that. And we're not going to limit the use to X number of months a year, how much naturally with the heat. I'd like a little more information before landing on the number fifty or thirty percent.
I agree with that because, I mean, just like you said, with climate change, we are getting more and more warm days and there, I think there's a ton of March that people could be out there and that's a very busy time of year. So I'm not, I'm not sold on the reduction to thirty, but, um, but, yeah, the rest of it.
So we'll bring it back to another work session.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this is nothing that's set pressing that we need to get something done immediately.
Well, there's too many moving parts in this, it's early. It's a great conversation though. I'm glad we're having it.
It is.
Out with relation to the dark sky comment. So I did put in here under the bistro light definition that they needed to be downcast.
I was hoping so.
Like the ones that we put out here. So just those ones.
Cast.
That's great.
Those would be needing to change.
Shield on them.
Light can't extend below the shield.
Because I couldn't tell when I read that definition, if you could do that with a light bulb or if it had that be shielded. So it's.
That's good.
And it'll help.
They're not cheap.
That give you some stuff to work on.
Thank you for all the work on this. Yeah, this is great.
We're going to take a five-minute restroom break.
Up for the housing stuff?
Yeah, perfect.
I think we're staying on track here. I mean, your people aren't going to go too long.
In a bad way?
In a terrible.
Oh, really?
You what?
That's good.
Thing, um, but we've been talking about this collaboration with the county. As a matter of fact, Dan Osborne is here with the county. Also, Melanie Reese is joining me. As you know, Melanie's going to be taking over managing a lot of the town projects, so running them for us, so we want to involve her as well. But the memo outlines sort of the responsibility of the town and responsibility of the county related to this project. County obviously owns the land, but it is located within the town, so it's subject to our development review process. I think the memo also describes why we believe this is an excellent site for workforce housing and also why modular is a great option for us to consider, especially because we can achieve some real cost savings and time savings scheduled, too. But we do need some direction from the council early in the process because basically right now, in order to get on the factory line, you know, we need to pay a down payment and do a reservation of our boxes, typically six months out from production, so we're already looking at June-ish in terms of being able to produce our boxes. I think I've been working, we've been working, we have a team, we've been working with Fading West, and their team includes symmetry, construction, and EV Studios as the design component.
Hold the mic a little closer.
And we basically have, in the memo described, you know, four possible options for the site. There's, there's a site, there's an option that is totally two stories, complies with density. Unfortunately, it does fail land use because of the master plan, but residential is a permitted use in the lug, so a master plan amendment would be a fairly simple process that could run, you know, along with the town project process. So, but that option really only gets us, you know, thirty-nine apartments, something like that, which we think is really sort of not achieving and maximizing the potential of this site. Second option is basically, you know, it's still all two stories, but it does exceed density slightly. The third option, which is the option we're recommending, is partial two stories, partial three stories, achieves fifty-four units and, but obviously over density and exceeds the recommendation for two stories in this land use district. Fourth option is just two, three-story buildings, but we don't think we can park that and meet the other standards on the site, so our recommendation is the third option. I think it's interesting, I did want to show you the box configuration. If you move through these slides, I'll tell you when to stop. Keep going, keep going. Okay, this one, this is an interesting slide. At first I didn't think it was interesting, once I started looking at it, I thought it was very interesting. This design fully maximizes the potential for modular because basically the boxes are about twelve feet wide by about seventy feet long. That's the maximum size box you can bring on a truck. And you can see how the boxes are aligned, so one box may contain half of a unit on one side of the walkway and then another half of a unit on the other side of the walkway. You can see how it's configured with studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, but those are how the boxes sort of are stacked. If you want to go back to one of the site plans, Danny?
I gotta say, box is not a great way to describe it.
But they are modular units, we can call them units.
I live in a box, you know?
Go, um, to one of the elevations, keep going to, there we go. So this kind of shows you where we've gone, three stories on the sort of western end of the building and then on the southern end of the other building. This sort of gets the three-story element up against the road, where there are some very tall trees and we hope to retain as many of those along the road as possible. But then it gets the two-story element towards the neighbors, Kingdom Park Townhomes would be two stories and probably less impact on those units with this two-story element closer to those units. So we're looking for your feedback because our recommendation is something you would be weighing in on when you see the entitlements come through. The goal is really to start the entitlements as soon as possible, to put our order in as soon as possible, get an MOU executed, do our COP financing, so there's quite a few steps that are contingent on knowing what's the scope of the project. And that's why we wanted to talk to you this evening, so we're here to answer questions and see if there's support for the option three.
Lori, can you talk about the individual units? So there's seven studios, fifteen one-bedroom, two-bedroom.
Each building, yeah, has studios, ones, and a few twos. It's primarily the smaller units. You know, this is across the street from Pinewood Two, which has a good variety of one, twos, and threes, it's also, or Pinewood One has a good variety of one, twos, and threes. Pinewood Two has studios and they're very popular, we can't, you know, there's wait lists forever for those units.
Um, do you have approximate square footage for the different apartments?
Um, I think they are in this, they're, they're very big, one, twos, or ones and twos. Yeah, the studios, they might be on this.
It's on that diagram, the box diagram.
See that. So a studio is four hundred eighteen square foot, one bedroom, seven fifty-seven.
That's big.
Yeah, they're big. They're big units, and then that is really because we are trying to maximize the unit size and what fits on the.
Boxes, right?
They're not boxes, they're units, yeah.
Lori, can we, what's the one that has the three stories on the airport roadside and put two stories on the road and three stories back of it? Or what's the reason?
Yeah, yeah.
Why didn't you put them on the inside?
I think that was a design decision, and typically the front of the project is the grand front of the project. We felt there would be good screening from the trees along Airport Road. I mean, we can definitely put two stories on the road, but then that would put three stories potentially more impactful on the Kingdom Park Townhomes, if you go up.
No, oh, okay, but I was thinking leave the two, I'm sorry, leave the two stories next to the Kingdom Park Townhomes.
And have the other one.
Flip these two. And the only reason is that when I went in there today, you know, the, like, the other side is not visible from any place, except the parking lot, I guess, when you first get there. And then it just might feel smaller. It, I didn't realize, I'm glad to hear you say it's screened from Airport Road because from the, from the graphics, it sure doesn't look that way.
There's a lot of trees there, we'd have to really strive to save those trees. You know, across the street, the trees at Pinewood One have actually grown fairly quickly.
Yeah, they look good.
So, you know, I'm hoping we can save these trees. If not, I'm sure we're going to have to have some screening along Airport Road.
Yeah.
There's also on this drawing, you can see on the far right, the green strip, that's our property, but then there's a forty-foot sort of buffer that's actually also owned by the town before you get to the Kingdom Park Townhome property. So our buildings are actually offset from the adjacent residential use quite a bit. But yeah, we're, we're just trying to understand if there's support for this level of programming so that we could move forward.
Not by me. I would stick with two stories. I wouldn't violate the underlying land use district. I'm okay with doing something about the Parkway Center master plan, but not the underlying two-story maximum of the land use guidelines.
So that's option one.
So is Pinewood in a different land use guide, land use district than on the other side of the road?
No, it's in the same.
Because they're all three stories.
Yeah, I mean, two stories is discouraged.
Yeah.
Three stories is discouraged.
Yeah, three stories are discouraged, but.
Because I went out there today just to like, because I felt the same, and I knew you were going to say that, and so I thought like, I don't know which way, I did. I didn't know which side I was going to fall on.
Predictable.
But the Pinewood Village is like, they already start way up, like, probably fifteen foot higher. And you can't even notice them with that vegetation.
They're against a hill, too, which is different than this.
It's not in the open.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's just my opinion.
I think, I think if we really do a good job screening, I, I just think we're, we need the housing. The county needs this project. They don't have a lot of other workforce housing projects that they're, you know, able to move or willing to move forward on, able to move forward on right now. And so I think, I mean, I want to be supportive in this partnership. I, I think that's an important thing to do right now. And I don't think, my gut was to say no to the three stories, but after I went out there and saw how much higher the starting elevation of Pinewood One is and, and the site itself, I really, I think it could be done. And I know that, you know, Lori would do it right. Uh, speaking of doing it right, when we went to the factory, when we had the site visit, there was a lot of concern about what, how everything looked from the outside, from the exteriors. How confident are we that this is going to look well done?
Well, they're going to actually ship the boxes, they say, ship them naked, so no siding when we get the boxes. We'll be doing the siding on-site and we'll be able to spec whatever siding materials we would like to spec to make sure that they look nice. Quality project, because I agree, the siding in BV was a little artificial looking.
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate the savings, I just think that we should have nice homes here, yeah.
You say me pouring through this again. The option one is how many units?
Thirty-nine-ish, they, they're going to have to, basically what they would do is they'd take one of those buildings, probably pull out some of the units in the middle, so it would crunch in. The, the second building would be smaller than.
So thirty-nine versus fifty-four?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm option three. I have a question slash concern with the screening of the trees on the, you know, on Airport Road with the third floor. There's a balance, I, I see the importance of screening for sure, but there's a balance between making those units dark.
Oh, yeah.
So, I want to be sensitive to that.
Dennis?
Lori, I'm good with option three. But I do have a question as far as siding them on-site. So is that price without siding?
No, you know, we, the price that we have right now is pretty preliminary because we don't have too many of the details specked out. But the pricing that they gave us was assuming there would be some siding on-site. We may upgrade the siding. You know, something that we can accept. But the pricing is so significantly better than stick-built.
I mean, these are their.
There's some room there.
This is their drop. This is kind of what they're telling you it could look like, so.
But are they siding it on-site or are we, okay?
Basically what happens is we execute a contract with the general contractor, yeah. And the general contractor is responsible basically for everything. They accept the boxes, they do all the site work, they do the foundations, the, all of the site work. And then they stitch the buildings together, then they side them, then they roof them. And the contract is basically with that contractor. Then we have a side contract with the, the person that's delivering the units. And it, I mean, it's amazing, the, the, the units themselves are very reasonably priced and the transportation is amazing since they're only less than a hundred miles away. It's a great opportunity to, to try this modular, you know, technique and see what we can do in terms of cost savings.
Well, plus, we're going to save, what, a year and a half, two years?
Oh, yeah, we'll save some time for sure.
I support option three.
Option one?
Three.
I'm option three, and I appreciate the speed and price with this project, but I would make sure that with screening, with wrapping, siding, we saw what a difference it made at the garage. Like, I would be fine spending more because that is a highly visible area, and I think Kelly's suggestion to see how within the boxes we can work design so that the highest part isn't on the road.
So, um, so that sounds great, it sounds like there's.
Five for option three, and two of us are correct.
Yeah.
Wow. Wow.
Wow. Being a master plan amendment to, to you all, along with the town project, it will require that we bring density, since the density is in excess of what's there.
But who will we be working with to decide, like, or I guess just, you know, can we look outside the box? Make it a little more exciting than, I mean, on Airport Road currently is looking a little bit tired and this certainly, I'm just really with Carol on this. We want to make this look. It would be great to see some community building elements, too. Yeah. I don't know, like, yeah, I guess in some of our other developments, there are community spaces, like, I don't know, picnic tables or what, you know, things. But they are right next to the rec center.
We could put a softball field behind.
And the softball field right behind.
Yeah.
And the justice center. The, all the elements. Like, where to park your bike, and I, yeah, I don't know, if there's anything like that. You know, usually there's, there are some of these elements, I know that this is pretty rushed, but I just don't want to lose that.
Twist the county's arm.
A dalliance or something.
Is, is there land?
I also pitch carports for bicycles and, and electricity for e-bikes charging.
Yeah.
I just, I think we've got to go that way at some point.
For sure.
And cluster mailboxes.
I've got that on my list.
Mailboxes? Whoa. Wellington neighborhood on that.
Okay, well, we appreciate the input, we'll work through design with the team and.
We're going to go start, we're going to order this boxes.
Yeah, but ten percent down.
And we're going to, I'm going to start the process for the COP funding for this. We have to have a significant amount of the, I think, early spring, right, or at some point, we're going to work backwards, but we, we need to start at least ninety days before we need the money.
Well, and our, our first payment is actually due when we make this order. It's, it's a fairly small payment relatively.
And we can fund, yeah.
We can fund that, and then we can repay ourselves with the COP.
Resolution, right, to repay ourselves?
Resolution from COP.
Right now, do you know?
You're still running good, Dick.
Day two.
All right, I think we have the Alta Verdi team who are going to, yay, there's Kimball, yay. Sort of make a presentation, we're going to be starting and launching into formal entitlements soon. This will be going to Planning Commission as part of the town project process sometime very soon. And there's been just a couple changes, minor changes, since you guys saw this last. We wanted Kimball's team to be able to present that to you. They also wanted just to make sure that the council's comfortable, sort of as, as the landowner, as the person that's funding this project, and, and as the council, that you're comfortable with the general site layout, pedestrian paths, the roof, roofing, sort of, I, I think the flat sort of shed roofs, the siding materials, colors, that sort of stuff, so I think Kimball's going to jump into that.
That is right. Hello, everybody, thanks for having us this afternoon, late afternoon. I'm here, obviously, with Nate Stark from Gorman Architecture and Ms. Elena Scott. Lori, do you want us to share the PowerPoint or is that preloaded by me? Thank you. It's good to see you all again.
Does you want me to do it?
Yeah, we can do it on our side if that's easier.
That's what I told our IT department, you do.
We got it. I'm ready, can you see it?
Yeah, we can see it, thanks, Elena. Well, hi, everybody, and members of council, thanks for having us again. We wanted to provide an update of our Alta Verdi workforce housing project, not only on our site design, but also some of our architectural design details and give you an update on where we've landed with number of units since we last saw you all, and we saw a number of you at the Housing Committee here a couple weeks ago, but wanted to just provide a general update. So a couple of roadmap items, we'll just be going through some questions that we would love your feedback on, and then some of our architectural details. So as Lori just mentioned, you know, we're looking for your feedback and to know if you support our site plan, our flat shed roof lines so that we can maximize our PV and solar gain on the project, the materiality that we've selected for this phase, and our parking and storage plans. So, you know, we've been very careful not to overpromise on the number of apartment homes we expect to deliver, but our team has been working pretty hard to make sure that we can maximize the build-out of this site, and we can get to two hundred apartment homes, which is fantastic, in four buildings, so two two-story buildings, two three-story buildings, just under three hundred parking spaces provided with bike storage, exterior amenity spaces, tracking towards net zero and access for electric vehicle charging. I'm going to turn it over to Elena to talk about what has changed since the last time we showed you our general site plan. So, take it.
Thank you, Kimball. Good evening, everyone. Just so everybody is oriented, north is to the right on this map, and this where you see, just to the right of, where you see this red triangle, that's the Alta Verdi site, phase one, that's under construction. We have the McCain Access Road on the east, the rest of the McCain property on the south, and the Blue River on the west. We have been working closely with staff, as Kimball mentioned, we were at Housing Committee on November ninth, and, and prior to that, council saw this with the McCain Master Plan update, and so this site is in compliance with the McCain Master Plan and is showing about eight and a half acres of housing, another three and a half at the nonprofit, and another acre and a half here for a future regional park. As you saw on the cover slide with the drone shot, that was possibly the groundbreaking date for Alta Verdi because you could see the tent there in the center, but this, this pond is no longer there, and I know later today you'll be seeing an update on the nonprofit campus building design, which is looking really great. The primary change since our last meeting is the removal of this building here that's right adjacent to the existing. That's um right adjacent to the existing solar field. Uh, this existing solar field's about two point seven acres and and we were looking at squeezing a building into this site. And ultimately, what we'd like to do and what we're able to do is to accommodate all of the homes um in the workforce um community within the other structures and allow this green space to just give a little bit more breathing room, also potentially allow for more ground mounted solar to achieve our net zero goals. We've also done a lot of work with um the red, white and blue fire department and um staff, um especially Public Works in looking at the vehicular circulation through the property. Um, we've included a bus stop um which is located here. We call this the P, which is um a loop road that will link um the bus and the nonprofit site uh within the complex and provide uh pedestrian walking paths to that bus stop for both residents and future nonprofit visitors. Um, we spent a lot of time also working on the connectivity between the Blue River Bike Way, which is a fourteen-foot path that we started to extend with um the McCain Master Plan for many years, but with Alta Verde Phase One. And so we have that shown in this location here on the west side of the property. Um, that links directly to both in an area for amenities, which is this triangle six that will create this really great connectivity outdoor space between both phases of the Alta Verde neighborhood and a direct link to the future nonprofit site and the regional park. Um, we used to have a roadway um that that came through this area. And luckily, through collaboration with engineering and fire, we were able to remove that road and really create better public amenity space and outdoor space for all of our future residents. So we were really excited about that. Um, from an amenities perspective, we have those identified on the legend. But uh bicycle infrastructure is very important to us, as was mentioned with the last site. Storage, um fix-it, uh potential sharing, all of the things that help us change our modes of access and travel into town, into jobs. Um, we have a variety of gathering areas, grills, uh potential dog park and different types of play features that we'll be um coordinating and working into the the grading plan and in with the landscape as we move forward. Uh, the access point from the the McCain Access Road is really close to the Solar Field Access Road where it is now. If you go out there and we're right across the street from the Tetra subdivision. So um we're definitely seeing a lot of change in this neighborhood, but really excited to move the community forward and just create uh more opportunity for locals to live along the river um and in this beautiful part of town with awesome views. With that, I think I covered it all, but if I didn't, I'm sure that Nate will pick it up for me. So we'll go into uh some architectural information next.
Great. Hi all. Thanks, Elena. Um, so starting here with our inspirations, we really haven't changed too much of our inspiration. Um, the only change is that we've recognized the Alta Verde um architecture that we've developed on that previous project. And we're looking to speak to that architecture, not just replicating that design, but um complementing that design. Um, we worked through a lot of design options to maximize our solar P V on that. So we were carrying a lot of those forms through on our um proposed design for Alta Verde workforce. Um, so with that, I think we can jump to the next slide. Um, these are aerial im- or renderings. Um, the one on the left is more of a bird's eye perspective, kind of looking at that center of the project. Um, and as you can see, we've um taken some of the the same material palettes and just given a different um color palette for this project, but keeping a lot of the same forms. Um, we are looking to maximize our P V available on the roofs. Um, so we have a mix of low slope um roofs that are screened with parapets with um low slope shed roofs as well. Um, so that will be a mix of of ballasted or racking P V system and a direct mount on the the pitched forms. Um, and then we wanted to put together just kind of comparison here to really show what we're changing, um what we're proposing to um complement and change. Um, and on our Alta Verde project, we had these window um box outs that really helped break up that facade. Um, when we met early on that project, we had some pretty long facades that didn't have much articulation. So that was the way we helped really um articulate those those forms. Um, and so we're carrying the same thought through on this project, um but just giving it a new um aesthetic there. Um, and then below, you can kind of see our material palettes sticking with the same materials. Um, so it'll be a mix of um lap siding, um board and batten siding. And those battens are actually closer together, so it almost reads like a corrugated metal. Um, but just adds a little bit more interest to that that siding instead of your typical sixteen-inch on center board and buttons. Um, and then the lap siding is where we decided to change our color palette, um introducing a new color, kind of bringing a new tint from that green, so it still has a little bit of that green, but more of a neutral tone. Um, and then the next slides would be our elevations, I believe. Um, and this just kind of gives a little more detail. We did just provide two buildings for these elevations. Um, so this first one's the southernmost building one, and this is a two-story building. Um, and we did hear um the council's um need for bringing that massing down. So by putting those two-story buildings on the end, it really helps stair step up um to the proposed three-story buildings, um building two and three, which we'll see here in a second. Um, so we can keep moving through these slides. Um, it's the the back of that building. And then the next one will be our three-story building, um which is building two right there in the center. And then on the right-hand side of the uppermost elevation is um an area that we've really been focusing on. It's gonna be kind of this focal point as you move through the site from the um access point to the Blue River. Um, that'll be a lot of glazing. Um, and we have programmed for that space to be kind of bike storage, bike maintenance, leasing office, common area, kind of gathering space with a smaller kind or the smaller courtyard in between the two buildings. Um, I think we can go to the next slide. And then on the lower elevation on the right-hand side, you can see that that element is just a one-story. So it does kind of allow for that view corridor to be maintained through the two buildings. So we're we're trying to uh hone in on making sure that all of the view corridors are maintained and um complement the surrounding architecture, which is being developed as we speak.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks, Elena. So we would like to um open up to council to understand your feedback on the general site layout uh as things have developed over the last several weeks. Uh, the roof pitch and roof forms that Nate reviewed, that really is important for us to maximize our solar gain as net zero is something we are tracking very closely with. Uh, the material boards that Nate shared, as well as our parking and storage plans, along with any other feedback that you may have. Uh, so with that, we'd love to to open it up.
Thanks, Kimball. Uh, first questions, anyone?
Talk about um just the individual units. I know since we lost that building with twenty-four units, how has that changed the size of the individual units within this?
So we are still refining our full unit uh layouts per building. But we did shift uh some of our larger units into like two bedrooms from three bedrooms. But we have a healthy mix of studios, ones, twos and threes. We are really trying to hone in on ensuring family units at this development site. Um, and so have been working hard to maintain those two and three bedrooms.
All right, that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't know if this was said in here, but like, so do you enter into a room, into a door, and then you go down a hall into a unit? Is that how that works?
That's right.
It's just, I guess it's a little interesting that you're aiming for families in these units, but I feel like they look a little more dormitory. So I'm just trying to think through, you know, are we building the right property for for the people who are trying to house? I guess is my thought.
Yeah, we have um had really good feedback when we've put three-bedroom units throughout our apartment properties um in different locations. And quite honestly, at Wintergreen and Keystone, one of the questions that we've received quite a bit is why we didn't have three bedrooms in that property. Um, quite honestly, there's so little supply available in the community to begin with um that providing three bedrooms is just a wonderful feature.
Oh, I agree completely with providing the three bedrooms, and I hear you there. I'm just wondering, like, you know, a parent with two kids and they're on the third floor and then they're always getting complaints from the people downstairs. I'm just wondering if that really I just, I wanna, I want people who are living in these houses to be really excited and not just, you know, well, at least we can live in Breck.
No, I think people will be really excited, to be um honest with you. So we pay a whole lot of attention to sound attenuation, not only wall-to-wall so that the neighbors next door have significant noise buffering, but also floor-to-floor. And that is a very big concern of ours, that we spend a whole lot of time talking about what those wall assemblies look like to minimize that sound transfer. Um, additionally, these these apartment homes have very amazing storage inside, washer, dryers in the units and a lot of usable space within the apartment homes themselves. So in our experience, we've actually had really good feedback from families that are living in these apartments that we build.
Good, thanks.
Any other questions? Anybody want to comment on some of the questions that Kimball's? Who wants to go first?
Go ahead.
On the first, the whole project, I appreciate maximizing the space and really that emphasis on community feel, especially paired with the nonprofit campus. I think they'll really complement each other. Um, I'm glad that you eliminated that internal drive between Alta Verde one and Alta Verde two. I think that'll really help the flow. But with that, um, and I would defer to you all and Shannon, just what does that do to the access on the nonprofit campus for sites two and three and a potential childcare center? And also, I know um with the parking within the P drive, that's meant to be shared parking. And are we maximizing that sufficiently to work with whatever will come in the nonprofit site? Um, so those are some questions I have um on the elevations and roof lines. Um, just looking at some of the renderings, and it could be that small image, but it looks like some of the roof lines are even tilted to the north. Is that, am I seeing that wrong from the rendering?
I'll let Nate.
Yeah, all of the shed roofs um pitch towards the south to maximize that solar gain. So on that right hand, the right-hand side's north, left-hand side's south, same with on the left hand, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Um, and also just a general question with some of these flat roofs. Are there any maintenance concerns with this, just the nature of being up here with flat roofs?
Yeah, it's it's something that we we take into consideration through the design. So we do have a a very durable T P O roof for that and um appropriate roof drainage. Um, and then we do have snow melt system just for the drain, the downspouts, to keep everything moving through there. So there's no ice damming. Um, we also superinsulate the roofs so that you don't have that thermal bridging that causes the the ice damming to occur. Um, and then we also provide roof access so that um maintenance can get up there and shovel and hide high snow events.
Okay, great. And then um just on the materials, um, I assume, of course, planning will commission will take a look, but just looking at them, some of these walls, especially the three-story building with the um tilted roof for solar, that looks like a massive, just single material. And if that could be broken up anyway, that would just be my design suggestion because it does feel very like box-like. Um, otherwise, um, parking and storage, um, just making sure that our parking works with the nonprofit campus so that everything's working holistically. Um, but overall, um, I like the project. Those are my thoughts.
Thanks, girl.
Can we go back to the site plan, Elena? Because I'd like to address the question about access with the nonprofits. So um, you know, we we have a weekly meeting with the nonprofit campus folks and have been coordinating closely with them on access to their site, as well as how the traffic flow will work in conjunction with both of our sites together. And um I think they'll show you during their site presentation, but they will have additional internal access, not only for um auto, but for any delivery trucks that they have. And we've been planning that in conjunction with them to minimize any um interaction that isn't desired between not only the two sites, but residential versus um the nonprofit visitors. And so by removing that extra driveline, we actually feel that we've enhanced the safety to the site. Um, and as Nate mentioned, have confirmed that with with fire and with engineering. Um, and will, you know, all we all believe that having access directly from the bike path down through the site to the nonprofit campus and park uh will really make for an increased livable campus.
All right, that's helpful. Thanks for clarifying that. With the potential second pad and third pad, one of them likely being a childcare center, is there enough room to build that pull-through for drop-off and?
Uh, I mean, I don't know. That's really not in their scope to look at that. And uh, I mean, we're looking at that and we'll talk a little bit about that, I think, in the next part.
Okay.
But I think it's all in how we decide to really look at how we're gonna share parking.
Uh huh.
So.
Okay.
Kelly?
Um, I I think I would just echo, um, these buildings feel really big to me. And I know that that's by design. We have a lot of people we need to house. But I think the repeating of the very light color all across makes it feel like a hotel or a, you know, just a super big building. So I think if we could, instead of repeating that over and over, break it up with either different texture or darker color. I think that the roofs do a nice job of creating some different levels, but it's just not enough. It's still that light layer just really dominates and makes it um just feel very, very big. So anything that we can do to, you know, if we're not gonna reduce the size of the building, which um I'm not, I'm not sure that I wouldn't say that I think it'd be worth losing a few um of these units to make it look a little more in keeping with a mountain town. This just seems like a city development kind of plopped in the mountain town. And I, you know, I wanna like it because I know we need it, but I think we can do some things to just help it um help it work a little better. So I can't, but I'm sure you can, and I hope that the next rendition has.
No, that's good. That's good feedback, and I assure you, we didn't just plop a city development down in here. This is tailored to.
Sorry, I don't, I don't mean to make light of, I know you guys have done a ton of work on this, and that's not what I meant. But it doesn't feel like it's our mountain town quite yet, and I I'd like to see it go that extra step to get there.
Great. That's excellent feedback and something we can definitely work on.
She can be really mean. I apologize.
If it makes the project better, we're all, we're all ears. So thank you.
Yeah, you know what? Uh, in some, in some regards, I I agree with Broom Hilder here. But but uh, yeah, I I do. I think this is for for me. I know we need, I know we need it. But it it does seem just, you know, when I'm looking at it, it's a bit shocking as it with its mass. And I think, you know, maybe mixing up the colors uh, you know, could help alleviate that. I wonder, you know, if you talk, I mean, I I know we need stuff for families, but you know, I'm thinking a family of, you know, two, a husband and wife or two dudes and two gals and their two children, you know, living on the third floor, like you gotta be politically correct on all that stuff.
That's good.
You didn't have to mention anybody.
Okay, families, so.
Or single parents.
So whatever, yeah. So it's families living of, so, you know, two people with two children, you know. You know, they, so they're gonna have to go in the front door, they have to climb three flights of stairs to get to their upper, upper story unit. And, and you guys say that works well in other locales and, and, you know, I'll, I'll take your word for it. But, I, you know, and there again, if a family is, is just desperate, not desperate, but really in need, I can see them buying into that. But it, it is, I mean, I lived in a, when I was single, I lived in a three-story building. There weren't that many families, just because of that, just coming up the stairs and trying to, you know, get into their place all, you know, from buying groceries, whatnot. I wonder why, and, and why don't you guys have any little decks outside? Is that, that's just not, that's just not the Feng Shui nowadays?
No, I mean, honestly, what we prefer to do is have that storage be internal to the apartment home itself. Where we can have pantry space combined with washer and dryer, laundry area.
I mean, like, for people like to sit outside on the, on little, on a little deck, a couple lawn furniture, you know, on their, on their deck.
Yeah, we try to prioritize the interior space as we find that people value that more than a deck space that they don't use all year round. And then we try to amenitize the exterior for communal use, essentially.
Okay, and, yeah, so, yeah, I'll, I'll defer to your expertise on that, I'm, I'm a here. What about on, on these roofs? Can you shovel solar? I mean, how, how is that? So, but, but, but the roofs are access to shovel in big snow events. But you won't be shoveling the solar, you'll be shoveling the stuff around it. Well, they said, they, they said this, they said this.
Yeah, so the slur goes on these guys and then the flat.
Oh, so the access is to the flat roofs, that's what they're gonna be shoveling.
You're never gonna shovel the flat roof anyway, though. I have flat roofs on my building, we never shovel them.
Well, it's just because.
The wind takes care of it.
Okay, alright.
You don't, I mean, if you have a fifty-year event and you have that much snow that you have to shovel them, that's one thing. And they had to shovel a little, or wreck out, cause it's a piece of crap building, these.
So, this, that will be.
These are gonna need to be shelved.
That won't be an issue. Okay, so mix up, I, I think, I think it would be nice to have it a little bit less repetitive. I, I do worry about, you know, I, I just wonder if this will appeal to families. But you say in other locales it has, and I'd like to see a little bit different color, color. And, yeah, that's about it. It's, this, this scares me as well. This is pretty big.
Well, we have a chance to see the, the unit type count and the layout of the units. Like, will we, will we be looking at this again, I guess, is the question?
Um, you won't be looking at it in a work session, you'll, but you ultimately will see it when it's presented for.
It's going to planning.
Yeah.
Okay, so we could talk about that later, too. Okay.
The actual unit layouts and.
Yeah, the unit layouts and that good stuff. And, yeah, how many three-bedroom we'll end up with, how many two-bedroom, one-bedroom, etc. Thank you for all the work that's been done on this. I think it's coming along. I, I do agree what, with what has been said so far. Yeah, it, it would be great to see some, some color and some break, some, yeah, breaking up of the buildings. I, I noticed in some of the samples you do where, where the inspiration was drawn from. There, there, that does exist and those, so, yeah, it would be great to see that, but that's already been said. Otherwise, I'm good with it. I think somewhat the devil's in the details with what the layouts look like and, you know, what that access does look like for families. Otherwise, I think I'm good. Have I, I support the parking and storage plan. And it looks like, just to be clear, too, there will be additional parking that's included with the nonprofit site, too. This is not the only parking, yeah.
Right.
I'm fine with the roofs. And the pedestrian path connections, yeah.
Dick?
I, I also appreciate all the work. You guys are great partners. And I know that you can accomplish a lot of what's been said already, cause I agree with the comments of, of my colleagues up here. You know, I think we can, hopefully, we don't need to lose many units or any. But hopefully, we can make it fit on the site a little better and not look quite, you know, have, not look like it has quite so much mass. I also just think about that corridor, that valley. I was hiking up Gold Hill yesterday, I guess. And, you know, when you look down the valley, you can really see Alta Verde one. And I think this will be, yeah, obviously, a, a lot bigger. So, I don't know if, if there's opportunity for a berm or something, you know, for, you know, if the, the site corridor to the north. I think the site corridor is south, the, the school site is, is, you know, to the south. But if there's any opportunity for a berm and maybe some, some large landscaping in there, that might be good, just to, so you're not looking down that valley and seeing this, these massive buildings. Yeah, I agree with all the other comments, again. Covered bicycle parking with charging capabilities and I'll save it for Carol mailboxes. But, yeah, I, I think the majority of the work we wanna see is, is to, to break it up some, so that it doesn't look so big.
Dennis?
I support the project. I think what you're doing is a really great start. I think one of the reasons that when we look at it, it does appear so big and boxy is cause it's the biggest thing out there. I think once it starts filling in with other buildings, that will hopefully take some of that away. Nicely done. Thank you.
So, I always have to be the bad guy for some reason, and I'm sorry about that. I know you guys have been working hard on this, but I, I would not vote to support this at all in this, in this form. I mean, everybody knows I only want two-story buildings out here to begin with, but this is very parking-centric. I think these need to be smaller modules. It's just, this is so not Breckenridge that I just don't, I wouldn't wanna live here. I would have wanted to live in Alta Verde one. This is not even remotely close, I don't think. I, color's not gonna take care of it. I, I, I think it, it, having just these big L's, I think, just create this huge parking space in between them. I think we're really gonna have some problems with the shading from building three into the parking lot, just, or building two. That southern exposure, you're gonna, we're gonna have some problems with the shading onto the parking lot, which just to me, to me says it's just too big for what we're trying to do. I, I really just am not a, a fan at all. I don't. And I don't, I wouldn't even know where to begin right now, other than, than to, you know, change some of the forms up. The, just the, the big L's honestly are just too big apartment complex-y is really, you know, instead of just smaller modules. And I don't, you know, I'm not an architect, so I couldn't even tell you what you'd need to do to, to appeal to my aesthetic sense on this, but I don't think this is something that I want in the town of Breck.
Eric, when you say modular, modules, what do you mean by that?
So, I, I'm talking about these huge forms, these big L forms. You have four huge L forms that are honestly just giant. They're what frame the parking, they're what create that huge parking in the middle that give it almost a, a hospital or a mall feel that the parking's all out front. And, you know, it's just not, I don't think it's cut up enough. And, and maybe you can't, you know, maybe it just can't be done like that onsite. If that's the case, then I think it really needs to be a two-story project and not a three-story project. And I know that we're desperate for housing, but to, at what price, honestly? I mean, I don't, I would not. I, I think there's, there's a different configuration that could live on this land that doesn't, doesn't read like this. But I don't know what it is, and I'm sorry for that, but, you know, I do like the roof form. I like the, I like the shed roof form in itself. I, you know, the materials, I, I think Kelly's, you know, correct about color, but the materials are fine. And, and, you know, the parking is sort of part of the whole, the whole thing, the way, just the way the thing is, is laid out, just the way the project's laid out. So, yeah, that's where I am. Let me be more blunt, everybody else. So.
No, I mean, quite honestly, thank you for the, the honest feedback. I mean, that is what we need at this point, and I think we've taken down notes to hear that the massing is not quite right. Things like colors are pretty easy for us to address, but it sounds like we actually need to do a little bit more work on the massing and the form. And so, I think we'll just reconnect internally and take a stab at that. And Elena, Nate, anything else that I missed?
Thank you very much.
Hey, Eric, you made me think of a question. Have you guys ever done projects where you provide less parking than, than the code? And, and build-in discounting for, you know, to incent people to come without cars? Cause this, this, this area, this complex would work really well for someone that doesn't have a car with the public transportation and the bicycle corridor and.
Yep, we, we do always talk about that. And context is really important. Sometimes we overbuild parking, sometimes we've hit it right, sometimes we've underbuilt. Oftentimes, five to 10 years later, we wish we hadn't built as much parking. So, it's, it's a fine balance. In this case, we are meeting the parking code requirements. And there, because of how the workforce operate, you may have somebody that's prime employment is in Breckenridge, but another member of the household is driving to somewhere else in the county. You know, whether it's Frisco or, or whatever it may be, or a, and so, we just have not found yet that people are ready and willing to ditch their cars.
No, and we just had an HOA meeting where we talked literally for an hour and twenty minutes about how Wellington should have had more parking, because kids grow up and need cars. And so, not only do you have two workers in the workforce both going to different directions, but then you've got teenagers involved and they need a whole bigger parking spot, so, you know.
I know. Okay.
Alright, anything else? Alright, thanks, guys.
Thank you all. Take care.
Bye. Happy Thanksgiving.
For, happy Thanksgiving for the Justice Center project. Do those have washer dryers?
Um, I am not sure. I will have to ask. I assume they do, because there's not a common laundry room in the floor plan. But I'll have to confirm. It would be our goal. I mean, I can't, I can't think the units that we saw over in, they did have them in those units, so I think we can get them in our units.
Okay, yeah, that would, for me at least, that would be.
That's important.
Thank you.
Alright, FERC nonprofit building design overview.
I'm gonna go ahead and get this kicked off, I think Pete and Brianna, who's coming down here? Really part of our agreement on the nonprofit was that you would get an early look at what's being proposed, so you could see if they were headed in the right direction with this. This is a thirty thousand foot view that, of what's being designed and how circulation is being proposed. There was some information in your packet on their internal layout and building operations, but that's stuff we really don't get into. But, yeah, and then we have people here from FERC and Building Hope to address any questions that you might have. Pete, you got something, anything else introductory you wanna say to them?
Yeah. You guys have seen a lot of projects today, huh? We're, we're at the tail end.
Better than the last one.
Beat up quite so much here. Well, Peter Joyce, board member with FERC, I'm here with Brian Snow, our executive director. Jenny's here as well for Building Hope and Nick has also joined us, he's our president of our board.
We have some more FERC crew in the back as well.
More supporters, we need.
You guys gotta get closer to the mic.
Sure.
Right up to you, Pete, so the people online from here.
Yeah, I feel like you're signaling there.
So, as Rick mentioned, we're here to, to share our preliminary drawings. The idea is to focus mostly on the architecture. And then, of course, we wanna talk a little bit about the circulation, which was brought up earlier on the Alta Verde project, cause I think that's pretty key. Thankfully, we're a two-story building. We, as you can see from the architecture, the idea is to create some, some banding elements. You'll see that there, you know, we have for exterior materials, we have stone, which doesn't show up real well on the very bottom. And then we have brick. And then we're trying to warm up the, the feel of the building a little bit with some wood on top. There are four anchor elements in the corners, these, these towers, those are steel. And then the horizontal roof elements have some steel in them as well. And the lower roof elements provide some shelter from rain and snow and sun for the entrances. The upper also do the same, as well as shading for those offices on the upper floor. Each of the corner elements also serve to draw attention to entrances in the building. And so, I think just visually, when people drive up, it makes it a lot easier for them to understand where to go. If you're facing the, the north, which is this rendering here, we have the food pantry, which you're looking at. And then around the corner on the other side, which you can't see, is the thrift store. So, and the parking is adjacent to it. We have the, the food pantry, or food market, actually, sorry, on the lower level. Access to the office spaces on the upper level, on the lower floor, and then also the thrift store. So, upper level. Oh, boy. Okay, and how do I go from one slide to the next? Oh, this. Pretty clever, alright.
Doesn't play many video games.
Monkey looking at the ceiling fan.
Exactly, the, the potential for confusion is really high now. I always check in on a Zoom call twenty minutes early to make sure that the connection works. Let's see, I'm gonna go through just these exterior renderings first. We're looking from the parking to the main entrance, which would take us to the upper level offices. And again, on the left would be the food market, on the right would be the thrift store. This is actually the south side of the building. And once we get to the circulation, it's so, or the site plan, rather, this will make even more sense. But on the right-hand side, in the tower element, that's, if we go back to the drive-through concept for the food pantry, we have a nice access point right there, people can just drive up, be handed a box. You can see one of the larger delivery trucks at the loading dock. This will, you know, facilitate receiving all of our food products. And then on the left, you can't quite see it, but there's actually a parking area for a drop-off if you're coming to take something to the thrift store. Kinda addressed, well, I guess this is, this is primarily just showing that parking area where those people are standing and you can drop off your donations. We obviously have some little balcony areas, so people can get out for, for some fresh air. The office spaces. Kinda covered these areas already. I'm gonna move down, these are showing stormy.
We need to, we're, Pete, the public can't see what we're showing, so.
Oh.
Yeah, we have to do something.
So far, I really like.
Okay. These are just different renderings, obviously of the same thing with some shading involved and different times a day. What I'd like to do now is those must have been at the end. Let's see. I'm trying to get to the how do, how do we get to the site plan?
Yeah, you're not talking into the mic enough.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Quiet anyway, so.
He's intimidated.
This is the presentation that was loaded. So what slides you have on here is what we have.
In the original packet that we sent, we had.
In the packet, the all the council has the actual site plan. It shows the circulation. Yeah, there was a committee that worked and looked at that. It was really important to try to minimize the the trucks and keep the trucks and the vehicle, the cars, you know, away from each other, which is why we created that access point off of.
Yeah, I can walk you through it by memory. If you guys are looking at the site plan.
If they have any questions on it.
Yeah, I think it really helps to tie into what the earlier presentation with Gorman was speaking to. If you're coming off the McCain access road, you'll see our access point happens prior to the access for the Alta Verde two project. And that that was really key, not only for us, but I think for them as well. Because now we'll, you'll pull off of the McCain access road. You can, you know, you come to the Y. If you go to the right or the north, you'll go to the parking area, which would be the public access. If you go to the left or the south, that's designed for the truck deliveries, the drop offs for the thrift store as well as, you know, if we go through the drive through scenario for the food market again. And then the the truck can loop back into the access road you would be going to the Alta Verde two project. So that, that site has evolved with all the different groups and everybody seems super happy. I think it works really, really well. There's, there's not going to be any confusion really for anybody showing up to this location. We, we didn't focus too much on any of the floor plans. I don't think those are quite as important to you guys as they are to us. But I will say that Suzanne and her team have done an amazing job putting these floor plans together. The efficiency is is really incredible, to be honest. So we're pretty excited about it. I don't know if you have any questions about anything in particular. Happy to try and answer those.
Peter, how, how much truck traffic? How you envision a couple trucks a day or a couple, you know, several trucks a day?
We, historically, only one of the larger semis per week shows up. And there's various smaller delivery vehicles that come and go. But not, not a lot of traffic in general, really.
In is, how about it? How about solar? Is there any, is it plumbed into solar? Would we solar on the roof?
Yeah, we're definitely going to have solar on the roof.
Cool.
Yeah, we're, we're going, you know, as close to, we haven't gotten to the engineering yet. But our, our goal is to be as close to net zero as we can. Yeah.
Other questions?
I know this is in the weeds, but I have to ask, what is bag lady?
I'll let Brian talk about that one. They're great.
Yeah, the bag ladies are a group of women in Summit County that make and sell bags to raise money for FERC. And so they need a storage area and a, and so that's, that's what that is.
They have wine bags that look from the.
You'll see them at your local liquor stores.
I've seen, I've seen them. Okay, great.
Very cool.
Thanks.
Other questions?
Nope. And I don't know who, or go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Just, I'm curious how this building, you know, from site planning and if, if we've done it fits in with the potential for the other two buildings, kind of to Kelly's question earlier. You know, if we were to put a childcare facility, you know, on this site somewhere and, and traffic flow for drop off and that kind of thing, along with another building with, I guess, used to be determined down the road. Have we looked at that yet?
Well, the, as you may recall, the original idea was to have three pads. And in one of our earlier visits, putting our location in the southeast corner made the most sense because of access and and the delivery element that, you know, that we have that probably the other sites won't have. So the other, the other two pads are, you know, designed right now theoretically, just to be along the sort of western side of that three and a half acre parcel. Nothing has really been developed beyond that concept.
Deck. I think generally the placement of their building is probably where it needs to be. And, you know, it's, it's the size that we described and et cetera for, for that. Where it's gonna come, what? So, you know, they, they want to be able to move forward and start doing everything through planning and that. We're going to really need to look at the parking layout. The parking is what, you know, and how that's configured and where, how it's used and who needs what based on the types of uses is, I think, what we have to work through. And I think, you know, the sooner the council says, you know, we're going to grab that third spot for childcare.
Let's just say that right now.
I'm, and I second.
Yeah.
You know, we start master planning those sites right now and start looking at how, how things are going to work and how circulation will work based on type of use, et cetera. And get a feel for, I'm looking at both Julia and Shannon. And that's, that's some work that is a staff part of our responsibility and working along with, with them at the same time, but it doesn't prohibit them starting the planning process.
And I don't want to slow them down. I just want to make sure that our site works well, too.
Good point. I think that is, sorry, that's a concern of mine that we're looking at everything holistically because even this conversation with Gorman, they're doing what they're supposed to do. They're not paying attention to this and making sure that all elements work together, especially it was a red flag for me when we removed that access road. That works great for the housing that there's not traffic between Alta Verde one and Alta Verde two. But what does this mean for these two potential sites? The access to a childcare facility, another one, I think the parking requirement is huge. So on first plan, I mean, I think their building is excellent and serves their needs, but maybe on that north end, we're looking at all those parking. And I think we do need to think about it holistically and how's this going to work with the parking requirements for childcare for the potential third building.
And Rick, are we, as part of our, I can't remember exactly, do we only have an agreement with FERC and Building Hope? Like, if we decided that three enormous pads like this don't work, we could change the size of the pads or only have two and have adequate parking.
Exactly what I was thinking as we're looking at is, we may do our master plan and decide that that, let's say, if we, if that childcare goes to the farthest to the north, that that middle pad may only be able to have X size building.
Yeah.
I think that's totally fine.
Yeah. And I just think like, that became really painfully obvious. Carol and I had talked about this on the walk down, but then when I saw that enormous development, I just was like, how are we going to put all these people and families into Breckenridge and not build a childcare facility like immediately? And so I think that we have to take the necessary steps right now. And Shannon's got to get that site worked out so that
and I mean, we have that plus we have all this stuff that Braddock
Yes.
is getting built in the next 10 years and.
But I love what you guys have to. Sorry.
Good looking building.
Yeah, it's a great looking building.
Yeah, I, I, I like this. I think, yeah, well done.
Great. I think it's great. The only thing I would say, and this is just, I don't even know if this would work right. It would be, I think it'd be cool for the Breck thrift and treasure if those outer doors were openable or the windows. Those, those windows would be great if they were either garage door or some kind of folding door. So because you should have good sun exposure, especially in the summertime, that you could open that up and just have a real sort of airy feeling inside your building. Just something to think about while you're working through this. So other than that, I think it's awesome. I like the palette. I think this palette sets a good tone for the other two or three, whatever, two or one, whatever goes on. Yeah. So thank you. Cool. Thanks for the look.
Great. Thank you for the feedback and.
You can afford it, build it.
We clear from this meeting forward to move toward submitting the planning at this point. Okay.
Yeah, with the, with, we will, the whole parking lot thing and everything will look at.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
See you, Peter.
Yeah, good seeing you guys.
What is your guys' timeline? I'm sorry.
We're, we're basically on the same timeline as Gorman right now. We hope to we hope to be.
Why don't you distinguish yourselves from that?
Depending on where they're at. We're, our, our goal is to start in July or August.
Cool.
Yeah, now some of that will be dependent on how long it takes Gorman to get going as well because of the access.
Okay.
And there, as you, as you probably remember, they're bringing all the utilities in. So we could only get so far without that being available. But we would love to start in the summer. You know, we're obviously raising all of our money. And so if we started in October and had to work through the winter.
Need more money.
Yeah, we'd just be coming back here for donations from council.
Started earlier.
It's kind of setting that tone a tiny bit.
Thanks. That concludes the work session. We adjourn until seven o'clock.
Think about how good I look. Really try to remind me. Sometimes Carol says some stuff that I need to censor.
Clear, one minute out.
I spread out a lot. So my heat stuff is over there. Just push it back over.
No worries.
Regular meeting.
Oh, yeah, regular meeting. I'm glad you said that.
Oh.
I had the wrong meeting pulled up.
You see that?
All right, are we ready? Let's call the order, the Town Council of Breckenridge regular meeting for Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021. It is 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sade, here.
Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron. Ms. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Coon.
Here.
Ms. Giello.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
I guess, Town Council minutes for November 9th, 2021. Is there any questions, comments, deletions, corrections?
I think they get the minutes really well. They captured them well.
As presented agenda, Rick, any changes?
We will be removing the Breckenridge Creative Arts Update from Communications to Council. They will not be here tonight.
Thank you. All right. And when with that, we move to Communications to Council. These are non agenda items only with a three minute time limit. Please, anyone in the audience wish to speak this evening on something not on the agenda? Public hearing is closed. We move on to continued business. Starting with second readings of council bills, Council Bill number 29, series 2021. This is an ordinance setting the mill levy within the town of Breckenridge for 2022. Ryan.
Mr. Mayor and Council have approved on second reading. This ordinance will certify our mill levy at 5.07 mills for the year 2022. That is our standard mill rate, 5.07. And we are budgeting to generate about $4.2 million in revenue in 2022 from that rate.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions of Council of the staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this mill levy, which has remained the same for many, many years now? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Hey there, I think on second reading, we should pass Council Bill number 29, series 2021. The title has been read into the record.
Second.
There is a, hey there, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council?
No.
A roll call, please.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron. Mayor Mamula.
Yes, we move on to Council Bill number 30, series 2021. It's an ordinance amending chapter one, Title IX of the Breckenridge Town Code, known as the Breckenridge Development Code concerning exterior accessory dwelling units.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. If passed at second reading this evening, this bill provides additional incentives for accessory dwelling units with, with increased positive points. It creates a new policy 51, which clarifies the requirements of an ADU. It also clarifies the definition of accessory dwelling units. Sets up a streamlined class D staff level review process unless it is reclassified as a class C because there's no building envelope or it's receiving negative points. It also further defines wet bars. And we're also setting a rental rate cap of 120% AMI. And we put in place a requirement that the ADU must not be left vacant for more than 30 days.
Thank you, Julia. Any questions for staff? Anyone of the wish, anyone of the public wish to comment on the second reading of Council Bill number 30 concerning ADUs? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move you past Council Bill number 30, 20, series 2021, the title which been read into the record. Second.
Second, any further discussion from council? No roll call, please.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Hello.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have Council Bill number 31, series 2021, an ordinance amending chapter one, title nine of the Breckenridge Town Code, known as the Breckenridge Development Code concerning exterior loudspeakers.
And council, uh, this ordinance will require a permit, the development permit, classy permit for exterior loudspeakers associated with restaurants and bars that have outdoor decks and patios. There's a, some new provisions that have been added under policy 42A, exterior loudspeakers. Regarding some additional requirements, it can be, um, mitigating some of the issues related to these and impacts on adjacent properties. Be glad to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark on loudspeakers?
Hey, Mark, I was gonna ask you this earlier today and I forgot, but why are we calling it exterior loudspeakers and not just exterior speakers?
Cause if they're quiet speakers, we don't worry about it.
It's, you know, the policy was already there. They've always been referred to that way.
Fair enough. Yeah. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Anyone in the public wish to comment on the exterior loudspeaker ordinance, second reading? Now, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move past Council Bill number 31, series 2021, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have Council Bill number 32, series 2021. This is an ordinance amending chapter one, title four of the Breckenridge Town Code concerning the annual accommodation unit regulatory fee.
Um, yeah, so, uh, this is on second reading and there have been, um, four changes since first reading. I'm gonna let the two council members on the task force characterize the conversation at the, um, task force committee meeting because they were asked to weigh in on, on a couple of these issues. But since first reading, um, we have, uh, set the regulatory fee to be fixed the first year at 400. Um, and then beginning in fiscal year 2023, council will review the fee at each, um, annual budget process. It will not exceed 750 at any, oh, sorry, 756 at it, at any time. We've also created a proposed exception to the fee for primary residents who rent their property no more than 21 days out of the year. And then also on page six, um, line 20 to 24, after the work session today, we added that, um, in the event someone improperly declares the exemption for the primary resident exception, that they will, um, be faced with an automatic sanction of revocation and then be placed on the waiting list under the new, uh, ordinance that caps the number of licenses as a new applicant. And if you have any questions, let me know, but I, I will defer to the council members to, to discuss the task force meeting, if you will.
Thank you. Anything to add, Dick or Kelly?
Do you want us to summarize what we already talked about?
If you want, no, if you want to, you can, but.
I think it's fine.
All right. All right. Uh, any questions of staff with what's been added this afternoon? Everybody good? All right. Anyone in the public wish to comment? When you do, please stand up, state your full name for the record and.
I have a general manager.
Minutes. Hi, Todd.
Uh, general manager of Marriott's Mount Valley Lodge on Columbine Road. I wanted to start out by saying how much I appreciate how committed all the council members are to doing the right thing to make Breckenridge better than it already is. You, you have all showed your tremendous leadership abilities, starting with the handling of COVID-19 in March of last year. You had to make several quick, unpopular, tough decisions with minimal information outside of being told this is an unstable and dangerous situation, which is the definition of a crisis. As little as we all understood about what was happening then, I still get chills when I talk about how you handled it for one reason. Well, I won't say I'm quoting any of you in case a few words are wrong. I remember Eric saying, if you're not from here, you need to go home. We need to take care of our residents now. It displayed the genuine care you all have for us in the community. That is exemplary leadership at its best. Thank you. Now the real subject at hand, what, what can we all agree on? Housing's been unstable for the workforce for many years now in Breckenridge and Summit County. While you can say this falls under the definition of crisis, does it require the extreme measures like the beginning of a global pandemic did? A number of us already subsidized workforce housing as part of our survival skills. My association's been renting different housing since 2015 and subsidizing the costs in order to create affordable housing for some of our staff. As Bob spoke about two weeks ago, Beaver Run has purchased more and more housing over the years than it started with. And then, and they now house one-third of their employees each winter. And then when it's not full in the summer, they offer affordable housing for other employers, workforces in town. Breckran Vacations and others have similar programs. While I'm naming myself and some of my lodging partners, many other industries in our town have done the same. Although we can agree we have to do more for affordable work for housing, does it require the same level of extreme measures on such short notice like the global pandemic? Let's, let's go back to the genuine care for us in the community. You have the opportunity to learn more about how this regulatory fee will affect the different demographics of both licenses before making such an extreme decision in such a short timeframe. Leaders should be thinking win-win, not win, lose, or lose, lose. Doing nothing is lose, lose. So you are right to be thinking we need to do something. I believe passing this regulatory fee as written at $400 per bedroom is a win, lose. Town council wins because you did something, except you lose some of us because we don't believe you're listening and it will be a financial burden beyond what was anticipated. We heard from different factions of lodging at coffee talk on Friday, how this regulatory fee will affect them. Council members have stated that this is short notice and everyone has already set their rental rates for the winter. So it's a loss of revenue for some. I spoke about how the majority of my resort is a timeshare association, which functions with a break even budget. And this will be an unbudgeted expense that they'll have to pay for when they did not assess the fees to pay for it.
I do need to wrap it up in about 15 seconds.
Timeshare associations are dealing with foreclosures and other unbudgeted supply expenses. Do you really understand this impact this blanket regulatory fee will have on all these factions? Some of us, what we, summary of what we agree on, doing something is a win. Town council's been saying the bolt fees will go up. Town is already borrowing money for the housing programs. 400 per bedroom will have a negative effect on many of the bolt licenses with not enough time to plan the offset of this expense. Here's my thought for everyone. Start with a regulatory fee at the additional cost of what they pay for their bolt license now or a hundred dollars per bedroom fee. This will begin to get some funds into the housing program. This is more financially manageable for the bolt licenses and more along the line of what we expected for an increase in fees. That's a win-win in the short term. Then we can take the next six to nine months and conduct a better analysis of the housing program needs and the impact to the different factions in lodging.
All right, Todd, you need, uh, you've gone way over.
Right. That's a win-win in the long term. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Mike or?
I'm gonna let Mike go. Oh, again, that's all right.
Right before I start to watch.
Uh, Mike Castle with Peak Property Management. Um, and I'm already honored to be on the, uh, task force advisory for the cap. And we appreciated the opportunity to talk a little bit about, um, the fee during our last meeting. As I said to Eric, we didn't really vet that out as far, far as we could, but it also, the conversation doesn't need to go very far when we realize that you need these, these funds in order to achieve some of these housing efforts that you've got. The one thing I wanted to stand up and say, and I hate to speak for Bob, but it does speak to the larger issue that we didn't get to talk about at this meeting was, and it's not included in the things that you've added, those folks that are already doing something about long-term housing, it doesn't seem, well, they're not being recognized at all. And that was an important point, and I feel like it got, um, uh, ignored. No. It just wasn't addressed. But I came to understand recently that you need these, these funds and it really wouldn't happen. The housing efforts you're doing now wouldn't happen without them. And I'm trying to convey that message.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Bartow.
Gotta bear with me. I couldn't get the font like it was last time.
Hey, it's a, it's a long story. You guys got my email?
Yep.
You've read it. So I'll hit the highlights and make it short. Okay? It's going too fast. Step back. Don't trip. Right? There's flaws in this report. As I said, when it's a serious issue, you get a second opinion. Okay? What's changed? Right? Forty years doing the same thing, put a lot of tax revenue into the town. I don't know what we were, Rick, before the pandemic, but put a lot of tax dollars in there. The part I wanted to talk about, cause it's a misconception, is Kingsridge condo. If you read the, the bylaws, it was designated back in the day for employees of the Upper Blue Valley, not Beaver Run. And it still is. It's just the fact that when the opportunity came, Beaver Run bought those units. They were, had people in there that were working elsewhere. Right? And that was built as part of Beaver Run. It was an apartment, became a timeshare, not a timeshare, um, whatever, something else and then a condo. Okay? So, and then we went out and spent that kind of money that I explained. The task force, as Mike said, you didn't give us enough time to give you any feedback. You know, um, you know, the other thing I want to point out is you talk about affordable. You saw what we charge our employees. It's affordable. We do this to make it work. So we ask that you take in consideration, I heard at the work session, a little conversation, do this thing and then review it for a year. Well, you didn't review the thing for 21 days. Let's push that forward. So the other thing, I don't know if Rick shared it with you, but Vale had a different take of how to get money for employee housing by increasing their tax by a half a cent to raise 4.3 million on sales. There's another option. So, um, I just think you need to slow down.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else in the public? This is about short-term rental or about short-term rental fees. You missed the first part of it. Jane. Yeah, but you have to come down here and speak into the mic because we're on Zoom also, Jane.
All right. Oh, that's right. I forgot. Jane Hamilton, 203 Highland Terrace. Um, question for a business license. So if I have a store, what might, what's that, what's that cost?
Uh, whatever the fee is, plus how many employees you have.
So 210, $200 a year and $10 for an employee.
Right. Plus they also pay commercial property tax, don't forget.
So we have the tax on the bedroom. That's one. And then we have what's gonna be, I mean, it just, it does that, to me, that doesn't seem fair.
Well, you don't, you don't.
Seven sixty some a bedroom.
Well, it's 400 a bedroom this year.
This year.
Right. That doesn't mean it's gonna go to 756 next year. The council will relook at this at every budget hearing and see if it's generating the kind of money that we need for the programs that we're doing. And this is not meant to.
And I, I, you, you know what? I appreciate that. So I, I, cause you have to, I think we all should remember too, that everybody that rents their house, that's a little business. So I, I think we all should be treated the same way. That's all. But thank you for that.
Anyone else in the public wish to comment on this second reading this evening? Is this about the fee?
Uh, just a quick one.
A name for the record.
Uh, Hank Scott, uh, 16-year local. Um, I actually don't have tonight to, um, talk about something else. But while they're talking about this fee stuff, um, I'm not sure if you're aware, uh, I have a five-bedroom house. I have a lock-off basement. I rent the lock-off basement. Um, I got my license a year ago, so I just started doing it. I get charged for a five-bedroom fee and then my water taxes, uh, water fees doubled as well.
That's Sand District. That's not us. That's, yeah, that's Upper Blue Sanitation.
Bolt license was the reason the sanitation went up. And the bolt license, I ran out of separate lock-off, but I guess they don't recognize it as one room. I recognize it as four rooms, so my fee's higher. So.
If you want a long-term rent, then they would recognize it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Hank. All right. Anyone else in the public wish to comment this evening? With that, the public hearing is closed. Is there a? You guys want to discuss first before a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Let's, let's talk.
Okay, so in, um, on page six, uh, J, so this is what's been handed out up here. Reading that last sentence about such, so this is about the automatic revocation. Such automatic revocation will result in the revoked licensee being immediately placed on the waiting list as a new applicant under 4184 of this chapter. I would suggest that maybe we either strike that because I don't know that we want town staff, this to be a responsibility of town staff to actually put anybody on the waiting list. Because first of all, they may not want to be on the waiting list, right? Like this is an assumption that they want a short-term rental, like a traditional short-term rental when they're likely a primary resident and they rented their place too long. I don't know. Who knows why? Like we just, I, I think we can't assume that they want to be on this list. And I don't know that I want town staff, this to be a town staff responsibility. So perhaps it's, we either get rid of it or say the licensee may apply for an STR license.
You could just say.
Dot, dot. I don't know. If.
Eligible.
Right, that they're eligible, but like, see what, but like, I still don't want the onus on town staff to like, submit all the information. And also there may not.
I think.
At some point, there may not be a waiting list.
Well, and I, I think we could just remove that sentence because what, what we're not, what we're, we're not saying that they're not eligible.
Yeah, exactly.
So then they have a choice to do whatever they want to do.
Absolutely. I, I think that makes sense. Yeah.
Move that sentence.
Okay. Does that sound okay? Thank you.
Other discussion?
You know, I just, I just want to say, I, I feel, I, I know there's some heartburn that this is gonna sting financially to a certain degree. I, I think we all have thought long and hard about this. I believe we are in a crisis situation now. Traditionally, 33% of our inventory is purchased by out-of-state owners. This last year, since, since the top of the, uh, since January, it's been 80%. I think we're in a different situation now, and I think it requires a bit more of a, not drastic, but certainly more comprehensive response. And I do, I feel for, I feel for Todd and Bob, um, in, in the Beaver Run. But I also believe that what we're doing will ensure that this town stays a community, not just a resort. And, and none of us here, and I don't know how everyone's gonna vote, but I can say personally, and also I can speak for all of us, we've all put a lot of time and thought into this and we're not doing this on a cavalierly. And we don't want to unduly impact or hurt anyone. But I honestly think this is the right thing to do at this given time. And perhaps, perhaps we won't have to go up to the, to the, to the, the 800 or whatever it was. And maybe with all these other things that go on with the buyback, with the housing help and all this other stuff down the road in six, nine months, we'll say, well, maybe we can back off on this. But immediately, right now, I believe this is something that we should do, even if we'd rather not it. Yeah, even if, yeah, we, we. Even if, yeah, we should do, so I'm gonna support this.
Anyone else? Is there a motion? Yeah, go.
I mean, I appreciate what you're saying. Jeffrey, and and I also appreciate the comments from the floor and. And you know, I know there's a feeling we're not listening. I mean, I've listened, I've listened through a ton, I've talked to many of you on the phone multiple times. It made time to talk to people and listen. Serving on the task force with Mike and my genetic is a really good one. And and by the way, I mean, the task force was charged to work on the overlay district. There are a lot of people that really want to get that done. So I I don't think we're gonna talk about too much other than that until we get that finished, so. It wasn't that we didn't want to talk about these other things, we had a big job at hand. So we had to focus on that. But you know, all of us, many of us, it's a business decision to. Support our workforce and many of us have, including myself, I know Eric and. And you know, many, many of us do, and I think it's good business. I don't think it's also a good community. And and I think it's great that we're doing it. On our own, I think we'll continue to do it on our own. We're trying to, we have numerous incentive programs. In place to to help incent people to do it. No, we don't have any related to the fee. Because I I honestly just can't imagine a way. To capture all the different models from all of, all of us that are in business in this town. That are doing things to support our workforce, so. I mean, I personally have bought units, done master leases, giving housing allowances. Et cetera, you know, I mean, I think all of us do, and I'm sure there are many other creative things people are doing. And you know, they're probably all eligible for some kind of pat on the back, and I don't know what it looks like, so. I I agree with Jeffrey, I do think this is an emergency, I, the nature of the buyers in town. And looking at the numbers in the sales, you know, I just. You know? I think we have to keep this in perspective, you know, the. The. The rental community is extremely healthy financially right now. Based on tax collections. And anecdotal conversations with others. Bob, I know that these last couple of years were tough on the convention business. They were tough on many small businesses in town as well, so. You know, we're seeing small businesses cut hours, cut days of the week, cut meal times. It very costly moves. So. With all of that said, I I do feel it's crisis and appreciate the kind words, Todd, but I. I do feel like this is is similar, so. I do feel an urgency to to pass at the 400. And then go a year, and then as the ordinance requires. Take another really hard look at it in a year and see where we are.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to go, I do, I think there's been a lot of good. Discussion here from the crowd and. And over the last couple of weeks, but I'm not convinced. One, that 400 is the right number, or that we're taking enough time. I do think we're rushing into this. And so I won't be supporting this tonight.
Dennis, do you have another number in mind?
You know, there's, there's other ways to do it, but I'd like to start somewhere much lower. Somewhere in the hundred to two hundred. And just give people a chance to absorb it. And then move up as we see what we need for for our housing.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I was. I just think it's important that we remember all these. Employees that have already moved out of the community. Because they haven't been able to find a place to live. And you know, I understand that we're all trying to do what we can. And this is something that we have studied. This has been something we've been discussing for. A very long time, as long as I've been on council. And you know, the the fee takes into account not just. Expenses that are incurred on site like cleaning and. And running a front desk and things like that. But also the needs to provide for those people in town. At the restaurants, at retail. And so it's a very, it's a, you know, a broad look at visitor spending. And we need to, I mean, we've talked a lot, and I don't want to lose sight of the fact that. We're trying to protect the brand of Breckenridge, and that means protecting locals living here. And seeing that fifty percent of our units are short term rentals. Really tells a story, and I think it's been a great story for a very long time, still is a great story. That we've, we're a successful year round resort, but what we really. Need to do right now is step up and make sure. That we're still an authentic resort, we're protecting our character, and that means the people, and. I think, you know, we have a very well developed housing. Number of different housing resources. Through our, through staff here at town, and we know where we can spend this money immediately. It's not like we're gonna be researching tomorrow. Okay, now what should we do? I mean, we have a lot of programs that will benefit immediately from this funding.
Thanks, Kelly, anyone else?
My comments are similar to work session, I won't be supporting this ordinance, not because I don't think the validity of what this program will support. I wholeheartedly believe in that. I believe in the study, I believe they'll give us the funds to do a lot more so to support our housing programs. I won't support it based on timing, if we were talking about this in June. I would support it, we had a little more of a heads up for a January first fee. That is my main issue, and then wanting to have a little more time to work through. The Beaver Run issue, the issues of the lodging businesses that have supported housing, so I'll be, you know.
Would you support something in line with what Dennis is talking about?
No, I think the number 400 as a start and potentially scaling up, modifying is fine. My main issue is that. January first.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I'm the only one that hasn't hasn't said anything, but at the same time, I feel like I don't think I could say. Say it more eloquently as some of my fellow council people, but I will be supporting this. I think, I think we do need the funds, I think. This is a compromise, we we have, we have listened and we have heard, and I understand. It may not feel like a compromise, but I do feel like it is. And this money will will go to a good, a good place that will do really good things for our community.
All right. It's everyone. Is there a motion?
One second reading, the movie pass council bill number thirty two, series twenty twenty one. With the exception of removing the verbiage, such automatic revocation will result in a revoked licensee being immediately placed. On the waiting list as a new applicant under four one. Four in this chapter.
In the form that was handed out to the council.
In the form that was handed out in the council.
There was a motion and a second, any further council discussion?
Been a long haul and. I appreciate what all you guys. Have said and gals have said, and I appreciate the feedback from our community.
Right, roll call.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
No.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Yes. Sade?
No.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right. For that, thanks, everyone. Uh, we move on to. First readings, first reading council bill number thirty three, series twenty twenty one, this is the more ordinance approving a lease. With Treetop Child Advocacy Center, a Colorado nonprofit corporation.
This ordinance, if approved on first reading, will allow the town manager to execute a. New lease with the Treetop Advocacy Center, which is located in the Breckenridge Grand Vacations Community Center and Library. On Harris Street. They've operated in there for a four year period and they, their lease expires in January of twenty two, and they wish to renew it for an additional two years.
Any questions for staff? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on Treetop? Uh, as a first, as a first reading. Treetop Child Advocacy Center. No, public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
On first reading, I move past council bill number thirty three, series twenty twenty one, the title isn't read into the record.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? No, roll call.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Ms. Giallo?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Uh, we have two resolutions this evening, the first is resolution number twenty nine. Series twenty twenty one, this is a resolution adopting the twenty twenty budget. Making appropriations therefore and approving the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six capital improvement plan. Brian?
Mayor Mamula and council, if approved, this resolution will adopt. Our twenty twenty two budget and spending plan, as the memo in the packet explains. This document has some changes to it from the document that was presented. At our early October retreat. And then since those changes were made, also adds one additional staff to the finance department. As a admin and short term rental administrator. In general, this budget represents as much as a return to normal as we could have these days, it reflects. The revenue growth we've been seeing over the past months. As well as a return to relatively normal program spending plans and also kind of a catch up year. For the CIP in terms of getting a lot of mothballed projects back online during twenty twenty two.
Thank you, Brian, any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on the twenty twenty two? Budget with the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six CIP? No, that public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
I move past resolution number twenty nine, series twenty twenty one, resolution adopting the twenty twenty budget and making appropriations there. For and approving the twenty twenty two slash twenty twenty six capital improvement plan.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Ms. Sade? Ms. Giallo?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Brian, I know this is your final meeting, I want to just say from the council, thank you for. Your service to the town of Breck and good luck wherever you head next.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Last two.
But it's total. No hug for me.
Missed the good pictures.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, we have a resolution number thirty, series twenty twenty one, this is a resolution approving grant application with the Bureau of Reclamation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kristen Brownson, I'm the Assistant Public Works Director. This resolution before you is to allow the town manager to enter into a grant agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation. For a water meter upgrade in the amount of 1.4 million dollars, and this project is part of our water efficiency plan.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for staff? Now, anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution for a. Approving a grant with a Bureau of Reclamation? Yeah, public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
I move past resolution number thirty, series twenty twenty one, resolution approving grant application with the Bureau of Reclamation.
Second, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Giallo?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
All right, we have planning commission decisions for. Nine? No. Whatever the day was, last planning commission meeting decision, decisions, is there any calls? Planning commission decisions stand as presented, we have Breckenridge Grand Vacations de novo hearing written decision. Kirsten.
That's right, you all should have an electronic copy of the proposed decision. We did catch a few things with the help of Councilman Carlton. And if you are all in agreement with the draft. We need to have you approve it tonight, and that will trigger the deadlines to the extent they would want to appeal something.
Is everybody good with? Yeah. Everybody read it?
Yeah, well done, Kirsten.
Well, and thanks to Chris as well.
So do we just make a motion to?
To to.
To approve the.
Proposed draft decision, yes.
Proposed draft decision.
Yeah, and I know.
Oh, okay, sorry. Sorry, man.
I move, we approve the grand, do you want to add comments from the, from the? Need comment or any stuff, want to go through the regular process? I move whether we pass the grand vacation de novo hearing written decision.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion by council? Roll call.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Giallo?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Uh, report to town manager and staff.
I sent you all a letter from the ski resort asking for. Permission to use the sprung structure that is located next to the kids castle, is that what it's called? Uh, up on the base of PK. So. There's currently a sprung structure. Uh, agreement that's in place with the town, and we did this as part of the development agreement that was done for the PK Hotel. And at the time, it was a big deal that we wanted to make sure that those sprung structures were gone at some point. Up there, so the first one, there was one right there in the front of the road, is is now gone. Um, and the conditions that are in place. Basically state that it, the temporary structure may not be inhabited or used for any purpose until a development permit has been issued for the. East Peak Eight Hotel. And a demolition permit has been issued for lot four PK subdivision, which is the admin building. Well, that hasn't happened, and it's not gonna happen. The next bullet says that the sprung structure shall be removed. When the East Peak Eight Hotel has received a certificate of occupancy. Or November twelfth, twenty twenty two. Whichever comes first. So. I think the scary is asking for. An exception for this winter season. They need all the space they can to help separate people. And their activities out there. Uh, and knowing that this would be the last winter that that would be operational. And if. You're supportive, I think the way. For me to do this would be to just do a town manager order, because that allows those town manager orders can override current code or other conditions that are set.
Doesn't, doesn't this language allow it to go to November twelfth, twenty twenty two, though?
No, I think the previous one doesn't. It says that it can't be inhabited.
Till a development permit has been issued. Yeah, okay. Oh, so they have to have the development permit, the CEO is not really the the trigger, it's. Okay. How do you guys feel about it?
It's fine.
So Rick, what if the vesting period ends on this thing? What's the status of this problem structure? Because they're not gonna get a development permit then.
No, and that that has nothing to do with the vesting for the, I mean, vesting. There is no vesting in a. In a development agreement. The vesting is part of a, the development permit.
But is not the language you just read us was referring to a development permit?
Yes, so they can't, it can't go beyond. I mean, the way this thing is today, you can honor this and just say, I'm sorry, you shouldn't be using it, and we're not gonna allow you to use it. Knowing that it can't be occupied, you can't make them remove it until November twelfth of twenty twenty two. So it would have to set bacon.
Gotcha.
But they're not asking for an extension. That's, they're asking. Be due to COVID to be able to use it.
They just want to occupy, gotcha.
And I think they probably used it last year, I don't know. Jody's call to me was to make sure to see if I had an arrangement with John because of COVID. And I said, no, and she said, well, I I want to do the right thing, I know this is there, so.
Yeah.
For.
I'm okay with it because of COVID, I just. Once COVID is over, I think this has got to go away. We've done this one too many times.
COVID may never be over.
I mean, once, once the health. You know, issues require the distancing, I think. I mean, once, once the health, you know, issues required the distancing, I think, uh, yeah, because COVID might not ever go away.
Well, I'm good with it, Rick.
I'm good with it. I'm okay, yeah.
Okay.
I'll do that. Work, get a town manager order done.
When they take it down for employee housing.
There you go. Anything else, Rick? At the, oh, bit fiscal. Okay, so, um, at the gym today, before we start with our reports, Hank asked me when we were going back to live meetings because he wanted to come and speak for three minutes about something about housing, and he showed up. No, I sort of pushed that first part of the meeting. Are you guys okay giving him three minutes just to? Just to give a public comment? All right, Hank.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Scott. Um, I'm not in housing, I, as you see, Professor. Um, but I have an idea, and I don't know the machinations between the county and the town, but I thought I'd throw it out there. So it's a three-part plan that may help a little, put a dent in some of the housing things. There's a bunch of rich houses, five million dollar houses around here. They have no incentive to rent to a long-term, someone approved by, you know, the housing authority. I'm thinking of a way to incentivize them, and that way would be take their property tax and reduce it significantly, if not a hundred percent. Bear with me. Um, on the provizio, that they take an approved renter and provide them cheap rent to basically live in their expensive house and caretake it. The third part of the plan would be the property managers, instead of being paid by the property owners, would, um, take some of that rent, and on a regular basis, they would go to the property and make sure the renters not having parties and doing whatever. Uh, and I know property taxes are paid to the county, but instead of taking fifteen thousand dollars from a five million dollar house in property tax, adding all that money up and trying to build one affordable property, they've already built the property. They've spent all that extra money to build that property. So the incentive for the property owner would be reduced property tax. They get to do tax write-offs because they have a property, uh, manager, and they also have a renter and all the depreciation and everything else. If, uh, your typical local that's renting is in a five million dollar house, and they're only paying five hundred bucks a month, they'll probably look after the place, but if not, the property manager looks after it. And, uh, I guess, um, the whole idea is if you target the people who are doing entire house Airbnb, which originally was meant to be a hosted activity, um, they may be more open to the idea of someone that they get to know and trust, um, effectively managing their property for them, giving them that sense of security. So that's as much as I know, but, um, I ran it by some of the folks over at the county. They seemed to think it was a good idea. I don't know how you figure that all out by not paying property tax or markedly reduced property tax. But the houses are here. Why not incentivize those rich people to look after the community? And then they become the heroes and the people get to heck, I'd pay five hundred bucks a month to live in a five million dollar house.
I think I would too.
I just wanted to throw it out there. You guys do what you do, and, uh, you know, if it goes through, um, name the rule after Jeffrey.
Yeah, we'll name it after you, yeah. Thanks, Hank. I mean, there's, there's some incentives we could do probably without property tax, since that's a such a state, uh, edict, but yeah, I think that's something to think about.
Something to talk, talk out. Thank you. All right, uh, let's go to reported mayor and council members. Cast MMC, um, I had nothing. I did have a call with the goose on Friday that he got busy trying to push through Build Back Better, so he had to bail.
So MMC next week.
MMC next week in Dillon. Uh, open space.
All right, we had a meeting last night, uh, for part of the field season updates. Uh, so twenty twenty-one field season has come to an end. And for the month of November, staff completed, uh, beeline trail repairing brake bumps and reshaping dirt features, lower flume installed, crusher finds, uh, installed seasonal signage and fencing, repaired buck and rail fencing and trail count data collection. There was also a comment about, uh, the burn pile program, and so town and county pile burning will take place the winter of twenty-two, twenty-three, and the neighboring Forest Service will likely, because it's a lower priority for them, will also be done in the twenty-two, twenty-three season. Uh, we had a quandary peak area update. And the county is going through some of their reporting and some of their surveys and things like that, so they're working on a more robust report, but right now it's looking like a pretty good overall success. Uh, over thirty-three hundred total reservations were made, um, through parking and the, the parking, um, Breck Park, the interstate parking said it was, um, a success overall. Uh, there were twenty-one thousand individual people served by the Summit Express Shuttle, and also between a hundred and two hundred dogs. Um, overall, and they did collect comments about, you know, how everything was operated. So that was good. We talked about the open space and trails master plan. We got some results from the survey, so we talked about that. Um, Bosak was in support of doing a winter survey. Similar to the summer, some details need to be worked out about that regarding timeline and pricing. But that was discussed as well as the GoCo grant for the Blue River Rec Path Extension Project through the McCain property. And so, um, and a team will put together that GoCo grant.
Seems like a lot gets done under the current council person that sits on Bosak.
Oh, thank you. Well, Jeffrey, Jeffrey helps a lot.
Hey, Scott, what? What do they do about the piles that are sort of up near Drew's house that are in the woods, that are like in in amongst the Aspen? Do they still burn those?
Yes, they'll burn those based on certain conditions, and that includes, you know, a substantial amount of snow cover and, um, you know, kind of prevailing winds and that kind of stuff is all taken into account, but yes, they will build, they will burn those.
I mean, I assume it'll burn some of those Aspen then.
It will, and they'll monitor those. That's part of the deal. They, they have a burn boss who will monitor those while they're burning and, um, making sure they're not obviously taken off, but the, I mean, even if it takes the, the ones out around that pile, that's, that's still part of the regeneration efforts that they're having.
Great. Every time I ride by them, I think, that's a dumb place to put.
Pile of stuff you're gonna burn, but. The objective is to haul that material a long way away from where it fell, and that's the problem, is to have to haul it and then stack it, so either you haul it out or you stack it right where, as close as you can, and then you have some mortality there.
All right, thank you.
What about the podcast, Aaron? Do you guys, have we done any podcasts or something?
Yes.
A lot of them?
There are three.
Yeah.
Find those?
Go to brekost.com. And all three of those podcasts are posted on, you can also do, you also just go to Spotify, uh, sorry, um, whatever the, whatever the podcast apps are.
Spotify and Apple.
Yeah, you can dig it up there as well, but if you just go to the website, brekost.com, you'll find them all three there.
And there's a fourth one coming out soon with, uh, this one, Dick and, and Taj about social equity, sorry.
My parents used to call me as this one.
Sorry, with Dick and Taj and, um, I don't know, who else was on there?
It was Javier from Mountain Dreamers.
There you go, Javier from Mountain Dreamers. So yeah, there are four out now. And is that, are they going to continue or is that the last one?
I think they slated six was the plan. I guess they'll have a few more to come out.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, thank you.
All right, tourism.
I should have something, but I don't.
Excellent.
How about heritage?
Heritage, I do. Um, so real quick update from Larissa is the Rotary Snowplow, that tent bubble that's over right now will come down this week. Um, and the final stenciling will not happen until next spring on the train. With that being said, that they won't need to do the same level of protection next time because they've already mitigated all the lead paint that was on there. Sixty years of Breckenridge Ski Resort history, sixty objects exhibit at the Welcome Center, and a sneak peek will be for council on Wednesday, December fifteenth, if you'd like to see sixty years of the scary history.
Are we gonna get an invite?
I believe so.
Okay.
Actually, she's gonna give it to Peyton to share with us.
Okay.
Great.
That's their snacks.
Great.
Uh, creative?
A meeting.
Uh, events?
We're not had a meeting.
Advisory for children.
We already talked about that.
Workforce housing, anything to add, Dick?
We talked about that too.
And social equity.
We did have a meeting last Monday. Um, we revised our purpose statement and also went through, um, goals that we had created internally as town and Breck, you know, was a huge asset in helping, but the commission gave input on internal goals for the town of Breckenridge, as well as created some of their own, which were more community focused. And otherwise, I think the big item of note is that we'll be soon looking for additional commissioners. One of our commissioners is going to dental school. Um, but I think what was really great, and, um, Shannon is not here, but I think Shannon is meeting with others just to talk about our, um, our recruitment strategy for committees in general and getting valuable input from this group.
And that, um, the application process, I believe, opens November twenty-ninth. We're looking for two, so.
Cool. That's awesome. All right, any other matters?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I sent you all this email, um, from some of the folks at Kata Park. And, uh, I guess it's, uh, you know, from, I've heard from just a number of people about it, and then I reached out to one guy that didn't talk to me, and he kind of reaffirmed, affirmed uh, everything I heard. I guess it's just bedlam there in the wintertime, and it's really, it's, I, I kind of liken it to a, the troll circumstance when things has changed and it kind of really impacts the quality of life of some of these folks that live in that hood. And, uh, so I sent you the email where he kind of documented some stuff and had some suggestions, some more realistic than others. The one thing I think we can do is ask, uh, Breck Parking, whatever those, the parking cops, uh, to, and, and, uh, the real cops to have a, uh, a heightened, uh, enforcement and scrutinize what's going on there. I guess it's, yeah, it's, it's, and he, he gave some concrete suggestions about one extending up a buck and rail fence and, and some other, some other issues as far as just enforcing the already posted parking rules there. So, yeah, read it and think about it, and, uh, this is something that's, it's not going away. You know, I, I think that second sliding, sledding hill made a difference, but not, not enough. And one of the things he talked about, which I was kind of bummed out, I guess, you know, they buy these, these sleds at City Market and they just leave them there because they're, you know, they, they, they just self-destruct. It's like sliding on wax paper. So, you know, and, and I guess there's some man hours that the staff has to go up and pick up all that plastic. So anyway, I don't know what we can do. I don't know if, if.
But you and I have already, uh, the chief and I've already talked about it, and, uh, there's no doubt it's a problem, and you know, it's probably not on the radar screen of the police officers, and hasn't been because people haven't been complaining about it, and but it will be now, and they'll be doing regular patrols in there, and this is this is not part of what, uh, Breck Park does.
Oh, really?
What I would expect the police department to deal with and, you know, the community service officer positions to deal with. So it's just gonna take a heightened awareness and some enforcement, and it will make some people mad because they've been getting away with it for a while, and now they won't.
Yeah, yeah.
So the pendulum will swing the other direction.
You know, and I'm, as it always does. Yeah, and I'm tired of asking to get deputized. I, I just don't see any movement there.
He just thought about doing a background check on you. He didn't even have to do one. He just thought about it.
That polygraph with smoke.
Yeah. Hey, Carol, on that one, could you bring up the HC three? I don't know if those sleds are recyclable or not, but I wonder if they'd be willing to put some kind of container and ask people to throw their dead plastic into a container so we could at least recycle it.
Yeah, you're on the board.
Isn't Recreate doing something with recycling plastic? Didn't Wendy tell me that? I mean, that could be a neat.
This is, if you go to City Market now, do you see all the sleds out?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're a death trap.
It could all be recycled one day.
I do have one other, other matter.
Go ahead.
I just, um, I don't, if you guys read the, um, packet for planning commission, they're talking about solar in the historic district. And I think I'd really like to come up with a plan for that because I understand maybe it doesn't work on every building in the solar district, or in the historic district. But I don't want to start saying, so let's just not do solar. I mean, I liked that we used to offer it in, um, our solar garden, but that's no longer an option, so I'd be super interested in.
I think the option is what the dentist is doing on his building.
Yeah, the Tesla.
Because the big thing about the historic district is maintaining the roof form. That's something that the state looks at, right, Trucks? I mean, that's just, that's something that the state wants. You got to keep your roof warm. If you can do it with shingles and keep your roof warm and they're removable, easy enough. The minute you start changing the roof form by putting an angled solar on, I don't, I think it's a pretty easy one in the.
So the Tesla, you think the Tesla, um, shingles will work and be fine for that?
Yeah, I mean, you've got a Tesla right now.
Right.
Based on that.
Yeah, you brought them in. They're awesome. I just didn't know if they're too shiny or.
I mean, we'll see when they go up. The project, uh, is under review right now, but that one is looking at putting it, the solar on the addition, the old addition, not on the not on the historic structures. That may be a little bit of the difference there. But, um, Eric's right. I mean, gotta be careful about our historic rating and what it looks like on the actual historic structures themselves, but we've been talking about a staff and we do think we need to take a look at the design standards and maybe, uh, adjusting those.
Okay, great.
Love the idea. Let's let this one get built. It won't be that long, and then look at it and and hopefully there's some movement. We can find some application for solar.
At one point, we talked about the pole mount in somebody's yard in the historic district. Didn't go very far. Thanks, Mark. Any other, other, other matters?
You know, just one other matter. You know, I sent you guys that article on the fentanyl poisoning. I don't know what we can do as a town on that, but it's, you know, it's scary, and particularly in our workforce and such. So, you know, if you have opportunity to pass caution around, you know, there's, there's a lot of deadly, you know, as I heard one of my employees say, the drugs are out there, uh, these days are really dirty, and I think it's true, and, uh.
Is public health gonna do anything, any kind of?
Amy, Amy was gonna take it to one of the drug task forces that she was on and try to, to, to get some more education out and such. But, you know, they've been so focused, yeah, they've been so focused on COVID, they didn't have much time. But, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty rampant. It's pretty tragic stuff going on. Hate to see us have it happen in our community.
I agree. Anything else for the good of the order?
I'll just say one thing. Well done, guys and gals. Um, this has been a long haul. Hopefully we'll look back in retrospect and say we did the exact right thing. But we all can look back and say we put a lot of effort into it, a lot of heart and soul, and, and we, we tried. And, uh, so, yeah, well, well done.
Sorry for calling you this one.